Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Thursday, November 21st, 2024, 6 o'clock PM edition of the Auburn zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Robert Tedrow. I am the chair, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Before I begin, I have a little bit of administrative responsibility to proceed through. If you could bear with me for a minute. So I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM, November 21st, 2024. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting of the Auburn ZVA. Please note the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here recording this evening? Anyone record on the meeting? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, we can proceed with that. Just to make sure that the meeting runs smoothly and efficiently, only one person may speak at a time. Would like to speak through the lectern, if you could please, and speak to myself as the chair. And then we'll each, if we need to, we will limit each speaker's comments to two or three minutes, but it doesn't look like we'll have an unusual amount of public comment this evening. So I think we can let people speak as they need. But if you are repeating again, and you know somebody is up there already kind of making mention of what you have concerns with, please feel free to take note, but we don't need to go through it twice. So other words, otherwise, rather, we have three hearings this evening. The first is a 6:00 PM applicant, and I apologize if I make mistakes in anybody's names. Yekira B. Bell is requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation located at 11 Grove Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 57, parcel four. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Is the applicant present? Man, if you could approach the lectern over there and give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish, please.
Hi, everyone. I am Yekira Bell. I am here because I'm requesting a residential kitchen permit so that I can sell cakes at local craft fairs. The plan is to, like I said, sell them there, and in the event people request costume cakes, we will make arrangements to deliver them, or they can, if they choose to come to my home and get the cake themselves, we'll make arrangements for that. I don't anticipate having a lot of traffic, as this will be a hobby, and mainly, I am a full-time teacher at BBT, so this is just for fun, and like, as I was saying, it's mainly for craft fairs. Also, the max cakes that I think we could do, if they're costume, they'll be like big, is probably two a day, so two on Saturday, two on Sunday. And that's it, that's pretty much it.
Do we have any butters that would like to speak on this hearing? No, hearing none, seeing none. I'll pass it over to the board. Mr. Maron, to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for being here. So if I understood your brief correctly, you're not anticipating customer traffic at the house, but it could happen.
Yeah, it could happen, but I don't anticipate being an issue, as I said. I would only do like two cakes on Saturday, two cakes on Sunday. They take a lot of time and effort, so the max would be that, and we could arrange it so that maybe one can come at like, I don't know, 10:00 AM, and the other one could come at like 12:00 PM or something like that, so that there's not a lot of like traffic, and I don't disturb the neighbors and such.
Do you anticipate any construction that's necessary, or any changes within the house?
No.
And any signage that you plan to put outside the house to advertise your business?
No.
Thank you. Ms. Chairman, I'll reserve.
Mr. Cusi?
I have no questions.
You moved on me over there. How are you this evening, Ms. Roach?
No, shockingly, I don't have any questions.
Mrs. Chacolo?
Do we have a sample of your cakes?
Not today, unfortunately.
Not today? No, no questions.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I have no questions.
I'm all set.
Okay, I think I am too. So we don't have any other butters, just want to make sure one more time. Any other questions, comments, concerns before we close the public portion? Nope? Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close the public portion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, hearing none, seeing none. Questions, comments, concerns?
No, I think just comment like we normally do. Thanks to the applicant for coming forward and asking for permission. A lot of people don't, and we always want to recognize the applicant for coming forward and doing the right thing to make it legit and safe. Of course, that's why we have these, so just that. We usually always commend the applicant on coming forward.
And I'm glad you do that, that I reserve that for you usually, because you're pretty good. Anyone else? Mr. Chacolo, anything?
All set.
Okay, so do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant? Yekira B. Bell is requesting a special permit under section 3.9.1.2 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for a home occupation located at 11 Grove Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 57, parcel four.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve what standard conditions is stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So we have a approval, a motion approved by Mr. Maron and a second by Mr. Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, you're all set.
All right, thank you.
I'm sure you can contact the Department of Inspektional Services sometime in the next day or two, and they'll get you through to the rest of the paperwork and what the next steps are.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening. Good luck.
Do I have a motion to close the 6:00 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right, we are actually fairly close to being on schedule here. So the 6:05 PM applicant, Mast Futures LLC, Timothy Johnson, is requesting Aquafor Zone Two special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to render impervious more than 15% of a lot located at 25 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 10, parcel 78. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Is the applicant present? Good evening, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Todd Broder here on behalf of the applicant. You'll recall this project, we were back in front of you, I believe, at the October meeting, where you approved 42 units of duplex housing in 21 buildings at 25 Vinyl Street. Since we last spoke, we have gone through the, most of the planning board process, we are near the end with them. Upon fielding some comments from the planning board, we incorporated at their request a five-foot sidewalk running throughout the project and connecting with the sidewalk that was originally proposed along the driveway entryway. In doing so, we asked the engineer to recalculate the impervious cover percentages, because we were close in the beginning, and so upon doing that, we realized we're slightly over the 15%, which is allowed in the Aquafor Two. So we're here tonight seeking a special permit to render the site, right now it's 17.4% impervious, so 2.4% over. You know, I don't know that there will be any other site changes in terms of adding impervious, I doubt that, but I'm making a suggestion in my slide here, that if you were looking to use a percentage, that perhaps a couple percentage points over that, just for a little bit of flexibility as we work our way through the planning board final process, might make some sense, so we don't have to come back if we, you know, we're up a little bit on that. I suggest that up to 20%, but it's just a suggestion. Right now, the actual number is 17.4%.
Do I have any butters that would like to comment on this hearing? Yes, sir? If you'd like to approach the lectern, please?
Mike Darche, 26 Oakwood Ave. I just, I guess I have concerns about filling in the wetlands and elevating water levels downstream, so if they could replicate that extra somewhere else on the site, I'd feel better about it, because I know the water's going to get high. The water was very high last spring when we had all that rain, and it would less area for that water to collect over there, it's just going to fill up somewhere else, and it'll affect the Fort Commonwealth first, because their yard is very low to begin with. And my aunt lives at 166 Boyce Street, and there's a drain pipe that runs under Boyce Street into that perennial stream, and I'm concerned that if it starts flooding, it's going to back up into her yard as well. So that's basically my concerns.
Are those, it sounds like you have fairly good knowledge of that drain.
I live up on top of the hill, so I can see down into the wetlands.
Okay. And you say there's a drain that runs underneath that street that is a concern. I just want to be specific about what.
Yeah, that drain has been there since I can remember. It was built, put there a long time ago. I actually don't know when, but it drains into that same perennial stream. But the house at Fort Commonwealth is low, so any water that backs up starts pushing into their backyard, so they're the ones that would flood first. Six and six, eight and 10 are less susceptible to flooding, but it's, the water in the swamp got to about maybe two feet from going into those yards, because it was so high, but now it's not a thing because of the drought we've been having. But that's basically my concern, because there'll be less area for the water to collect over there, and that's my concern.
If the board doesn't mind, I'm going to refer to the town for this, and is this particular section of the gentleman's, where he's referring to, are you familiar with this particular area, Gary, or can you be?
Not really familiar with the dynamics of that at all, so I'm not, that's not really privy to what I do.
Sure, okay. I just wanted to make sure before I refer back to the applicant, because I wasn't really sure which direction I should take this particular concern. So you heard the gentleman's concern about drainage and potential flooding issues in the particular areas he's referring to?
Yes, so I guess I would comment in two ways. One, you know, we are going through the Conservation Commission process, so they are aware of areas that are impacted. It's primarily buffer zone, you know, work up in the site closer to where I think the gentleman lives. There is work along the driveway area where it does get closer to the wetlands, and that's all obviously going through Conservation Commission approval process, which, you know, we're well through that process at this point. And then additionally, through the planning board process, Graves Engineering has done a comprehensive review of the site plan, all the drainage information, all the stormwater management, you know, and all of those items that are part of the project, and we are well through that Graves review as well. We have a couple of items to finish up as we go back to Planning Board at their, I think it's their next meeting. You know, so we're addressing each of those concerns that have come up, anything that's come up in terms of stormwater drainage. I'm not sure I have an answer for the particular issue. I know there was public comment at one of the hearings about a drain pipe coming and that sort of daylights and dumps onto this property, which we are now aware of, and is something that we can address, it's on our property, it's something that probably shouldn't be going on, but we'll work with DPW to figure out the best solution, but essentially, the pipe just dumps the water onto this property. But we have controls in place per the site plan to deal with the water flow anyway, so we should be able to handle that.
I think what we can do also is, you know, the concerns of the public comment, and this is just for the board, I mean, we can sort of put an asterisk in this particular moment right here in the, you know, the meeting, and make sure that the other boards are aware of this conversation, so they can be informed of it also. I mean, I don't think it's that difficult, we can make sure that they've heard this concern. I mean, I don't think that's influencing any of the board in any way.
Fair point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So thank you very much. So really, I think what this comes down to is, if I can sort of recap this whole thing, get us back in focus here, the planning board requested wider sidewalks, roughly, so they'll go in with the additional sidewalks that potentially could be from the town side later at another date. So this is where the increase in impervious surface is requested to compensate for what the planning board has requested, correct?
Right, so the sidewalks stopped at a point, we didn't work them through the whole project, they were really only along the drive area, planning board suggested, and I don't, I think it was a good suggestion, I'm not suggesting otherwise, but that we put them throughout the project so that people in the, within the project can walk around the loop and stay on the sidewalks at all times. So the additional five feet spread around, it didn't take a lot to go over the 15%, we were close anyway, but the 17.4% is where we ended up once we added that additional impervious, and that's, and that's really, as the board knows, that's the only reason we're back, is to exceed the 15% threshold. So really, the only site changes that we have are, because of that, it expanded the whole footprint of the project a little bit, so it doesn't, it doesn't add a lot, and I, the 2.4% I think is pretty minimal.
Thank you so much. So again, I just want to make sure one more time, no more butters. Sir, you've heard the conversation, and does that satisfy you with the concerns that you had? Okay, so just for the record, the gentleman said yes, he didn't want to come back up to the lectern for that. So over to the board. Vice Chair Maron, to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Broder, in your brief, you indicate 16.3, and now you tell us 17.4. I was so looking forward to giving you a hard time, being a steward of the Aquafor, of increasing any percentage on the impervious surface. So I was trying to wrap my head around the relief of 1.3, now you ask for 2.4.
I know, it's extreme.
But that's what we're talking about, is an incremental increase, just based on the fact that sidewalks have been requested, and you're complying with that.
Yes, I mean, that was the biggest change. We had some small tweaks, but that was the biggest change.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Chairman, I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Cusi?
Yeah, who sent this out to Graves?
The planning board.
The planning board did?
Yes.
And have you got the results back from it?
Yes.
Everything's?
We are in the process of the back and forth, so Graves issued their initial report, I believe we've issued our comments back to them, now we wait for Graves to give the sort of all clear, if you will, or are there any other open issues? That goes back to Planning Board, and you'll be glad to know, the planning board won't close out of that hearing process until that Graves review is satisfied, so we're still in that piece of it.
Just to clarify, when it went out to Graves, they are aware of the change that planning board wants to make, so they're aware that the storm management system now, instead of 15%, or it's, they're aware of the increase in the percentage for the stormwater management.
The updated plans, you know, include the changes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just to clarify, especially for the butter, I just wanted them to know that the peer review does include the changes.
Yes, the next peer review letter that we see should address specifically that they've seen that, they reviewed it, there's no issues, or there are, and we'll deal with it.
And that letter has to go to planning board before they.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good.
Mr. Chacolo?
I'd like to reserve comment for the moment.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bush?
I have nothing else to add.
Sir? I'm good.
Okay. So I think my only comment is that we're, I think we're basically satisfying the request of another board for, again, I think it's going to, it seems to me that it is going to improve the overall quality of life in the neighborhood by, like I said, making loops, being able to walk wider sidewalks, they're safer, all those types of things, so. And I also heard the comment at one point in this hearing, where if we went up to the 15% or whatever, it might be just for me, but I say, you know, when we deal with other commercial properties, we're usually at a 20% impervious surface, right? So I don't think it would be unreasonable to say an 18%, provided the other boards would see it appropriate. Again, I'm not trying to give, I just don't think, if we could give them a little bit of extra leeway in the other case, other boards decide that might be something that needs to be changed, they need to come back before us again. And I'm just asking the board for that.
Yeah, as long as it's an adequate system. I mean, you know, generally with business, we push for the recharge system, and we make sure that it's really going to work.
Right, right.
So we do send it out to Graves, generally.
It seems like the other boards have already done all those things for us, so.
If planning board had sent it out.
I mean, we can just, again, we can just vote on it as it stands, or we could say, you know, up to 20%. I think that would be really up to the board, that's what was my point of discussion. Any comments on that? No?
I'm not opposed to it, Mr. Chairman, because I think, I think if in fact there were further modifications that made incremental changes, then we could afford the applicant, you know, the un, the unneed to come back to the board and ask for this, if this is their only topic. So I think it has merit to set a threshold.
Even if it was plus 1%, I mean, you know, you could set a parameter on it, if that was something that would be interesting.
Yeah, I don't know how we would qualify it for what condition we would prove it up to. I think, I think the intent would be to just set a particular threshold and give them that flexibility, if we were open to do that, give them the flexibility to work within that, in case another board imposes another change.
Or if they, again, you know, this gentleman just brought up something, they may not be familiar with this drain, and it might require some type of rework, where it's going to say, you know, if they do discover that there is some type of water management in addition to over there now, you know, it could certainly cause a rework.
Yeah, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to entertain it, quite frankly. I mean, we're talking about between five, between 15 and 20, or five for a commercial property that may have some additional changes. And as Mr. Cusi had said, as long as the system works, as long as it's been peer reviewed, and the system works correctly to filter through. And I think, it's interesting that, if I may, the butters' comments, which I thought were thoughtful, that if there's, if there are challenges in drainage now, and there's nothing on that property now, I mean, putting a drainage system is only going to be a massive betterment for that entire area.
Right.
You know, to that, to that degree. So I, for what it's worth, I wouldn't be opposed to setting a reasonable threshold beyond the, as Mr. Broder is now asking for 17.4.
Yes, sir.
I think it might be a reasonable.
Round it up to 20, I think is not unreasonable.
No, I.
And it's within our standards, realistically.
Yeah, I mean, we could, there's a lot to be done with other boards, we could offer them the courtesy of not having to come back within that threshold for this topic.
And I also think, to me, it exists as a statement of competence that our other boards will be able to sort through it without us having a supervisor and oversee it, we're not, because that's not our role, you know what I mean? I think, you know, if we're going to give them the leeway, the other boards are going to do it correctly and properly, I think, so.
Fair.
That's just my thoughts.
Fair.
Yeah, I think the butter's concern was the flooding downstream.
Right.
Once it leaves the property, we don't want to flood.
That's right, that's a good point. Yeah.
I would hope that the planning board would be looking at that.
Sure. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, although it may not fall under our jurisdiction, how wide is that road being going to be?
24 feet. 24 feet.
24 feet.
24.
Had it tested this week. 24. Mr. Allard?
Yep.
That fall?
That's, that's the threshold.
Very good, thank you.
And just for the record, too, we did have a meeting about this, I think it was previous, before the last meeting, and there was a discussion about fire, safety, equipment, and apparatus, and believe it or not, 24 feet is what the legs for our widest truck, you know, they have the extended legs that come out and drop down and stabilize the larger vehicles, that's 24, that's within 24 feet, it's like 23 feet, so they could literally completely open up their telescoping stabilizers and lock it down in the middle of the street if they had to respond over there, and that was brought up in the meeting, too. So I think that's an actually pretty good safety feature.
Thanks.
And again, I don't want to be quoted any fire department people out there, if I said it wrong, and it's 26 feet or something like that, I apologize, but they did say it does fit correctly. So with that, any other discussion? Do we want to move with this, or?
We're still in open hearing, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we are, I just didn't know if you wanted to continue with discussion at all, or?
Not on that point, for me.
Okay. Do you have anything else you want to add, sir?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion, I was going to make a motion to close the public portion of the.
Okay, that's where I was headed next, thank you. So I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No, I mean, I think everyone's sort of in agreement. An extra 5% to avoid having to come back if they're 2%, I mean, that seems a little ridiculous. 20 is pretty standard, and they're going to have Graves, they're going to have peer review, they're still at planning. The fact that they're back here for such a small percentage is, I mean, I don't want to say a waste of time, because they obviously have to do it, but it seems like we're holding the finger a little too, especially at a request of planning board, so I'm certainly happy to make a motion to go to the 20, it sounds like everybody else is in agreement with that.
Okay, so let me go ahead and read again, then. So we have a 6:05 PM applicant, Mast Futures LLC, Timothy Johnson, is requesting an Aquafor Zone Two special permit under section 4.3.5.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaw to render impervious more than 15% of a lot located at 25 Vinyl Street, Auburn, Mass., 01501, map 10, parcel 78. Is there a motion for the 6:05?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve, I'm not going to repeat that whole thing, but as stated, with the impervious up to 20% to avoid future, and then with regular standing conditions.
And then other standing conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have two seconds on that. Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. Thank you very much for your time, sir. Good luck. So we have you up to 20% in the event you have to go to any of the other boards, so I hope that serves you well.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Good evening.
Good evening. So we'll give them a couple of seconds to clear out, and we'll get to number three So just as a reminder, this hearing remained open, this is a continuation, so I just want to be clear, I don't have to read it and request an opening and all that kind of stuff, but I'm going to read it, just for the record, what we're discussing. Did I make a motion to close the 6:05? I just want to make sure.
You did, Mr. Chairman.
I did or did not?
You did.
Did not.
I did not. Did I have a motion to close 6:05?
Motion closed.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so anyway, applicant, 16 Perry Place LLC, requesting a comprehensive permit under Mast General Law 40B for a housing complex at 16 Perry Place, Auburn, Mass., map 18, parcels 14 and 15. Again, for the record, this hearing is open and remains open. So is the applicant present?
I am, sir. Good evening, board. Good. James Venencasa, I'm here with Stephen.
Can I just, I'm sorry, before you begin, for the ACTV people, can we get the impervious surface if somebody is there?
Is this?
It's not critical, but I just don't want somebody to say at home that watching it and it's.
Is this laptop?
It is. Perfect.
I know.
There we go, thank you so much. I just didn't want to confuse anybody who was at home. Go ahead, sir, I apologize for interrupting you.
No worries. All right, good evening, board. James Venencasa, I'm here with Stephen Venencasa, 16 Perry Place. So just to fill in the board from, you know, where we're at since the last meeting, the plans went out to Graves Engineering for peer review, and the traffic study went out to VHB for their peer review. We have gotten back the peer review from VHB, and Ali Khorasani, our traffic engineer, is working with him, you know, with the comments. So we haven't, we haven't, you know, gone back and forth quite yet, but we're in process is working with him, you know, with the comments. So we haven't, we haven't, you know, gone back and forth quite yet, but we're, we're in process of that. We have not received the, um, comment letter back from Graves Engineering yet. I did talk to Jeff today, Jeff Walsh. He said that we should have that probably towards the end of the week, you know, to next week with the holiday. Um, so we'll be going back and forth with him, obviously, you know, once that comes about. Um, so really not too much tonight to discuss, but we felt it would be a good opportunity to come in and just discuss with the board. You know, if there was anything that the board would like to see, um, or, you know, comments that they have, obviously, when we're working with Graves and everything with changes, see if there was anything that the board would like to discuss tonight. That's really where we're at tonight.
Um, as always, I'd like to go to the floor first. Um, so do we have any Butters that would like to comment? Go ahead. Yes, sir. If you'd like to approach the lectern, give us your name and address, uh, and include your comments.
Good evening, board. Danny Largess, thirty-nine Perry Place. A couple of things were touched on, uh, last meeting, last month. Just to, to touch with, uh, Mr. Dacre, who lives at number twenty-three-two, thirty-two Perry Place. Um, Mr. Dacre was thinking on building a home for his daughter on this piece of property. And after coming up to the town hall, this was in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, after coming up to the town hall and a little investigation, the town said, sorry, that property is non-buildable. They sent the letter. I do have a copy of that letter for each and every one of you. Mr. Dacre is in, in the audience as well. Um, if I may approach and pass out copies of it, thank you.
Us to, uh, describe it into the record.
It's all right. We can share.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a zoning determination, um, May twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen.
So that is one of the reasons why Mr. Dacre did not purchase this property. If he known the, the cards were going to flip, I'm sure he would have purchased it. So you, you understand that frustration at how we can go from, sorry, non-buildable to, hey, yeah, we're going to put in a hundred and fifty-eight units.
Um, okay, I mean, again, this is something that's new. I've never seen it. We can, we can look into it. I don't know the, how it relates to the current scenario. I'm not saying it does or it doesn't. Um.
Well, you, you would ask for that last meeting, Mr. Chair, if he had the letter and, um, but again, he, he would have purchased that property if the town had said that was buildable. So back then, in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, it, it was non-buildable. Now all of a sudden, we're in twenty twenty-four. Well, it started, uh, three years ago and it's buildable now. So you can understand that frustration. Um, the builder has not proved where he has the right to do what he wants to do to the road. You just spoke at the, the last developer, the road width down there is sixteen to, uh, eighteen feet wide.
So if I'm reading this correctly, and I understand your concern here, but the, the parcel that we're here discussing is map eighteen parcel fourteen and fifteen. And this particular application was specifically for, um, map eighteen parcel fourteen. So it didn't include fifteen. So I would think that the.
He, he was only after that one, you know, that, that, that where he wanted to build the house was right next door to him. He didn't want to build anything to the.
The relative complaint that you're showing this here is the fact that these gentlemen are here, and again, I have to see the validity of this argument before I can bring it forward. And they're talking about map eighteen parcel fourteen and fifteen, and this one is just speaking map eighteen parcel fourteen. If they have fourteen and fifteen and they're going to be presenting those projects, that frontage in that road, that changes. That has an effect on the, our project.
Uh, I'm sorry, I missed you, Mr. Chair. So what about the frontage? The frontage is, you have less than thirty feet, twenty-four feet for the frontage because it's wetland.
So I think you're getting a little, also, I think people have to understand this too, okay? Wetlands is not defined as what we thought of them in the nineteen seventies when the Wetlands Protection Act took place. Right around two thousand and sixteen or two thousand and fourteen, the Supreme Court made a few other additional changes to the Wetlands Protection Act. And what we once knew as wetlands protection is no longer the same thing. So vernal pools, springs that roll downhill in the springtime and then dry up for the summer, all those things that used to be considered wetlands are not anymore. So I think you have to kind of re-educate yourself on that as well. Vernal pools are not even considered wetlands anymore.
Correct. I understand that, Mr. Chair. We're, I'm talking swamp. I'm not talking, I mean, right now we're in a drought and it's barely moving. But in the springtime, when it snows and we get the rains, like I said, Mr. Chair, I have over a hundred pitches of that area to show you where it is flooded completely from Perry Place all the way to Brook Street, Brocklin Road, Brook Street, through the old mill. It's a body of water. The water comes over Perry Place, at the condos, goes around number four, Mr. Ball of his property. If you would like, Mr. Chair, I can print off those hundred pitches that I have taken. Um.
That's not, I.
Just to show you that, when I say wetland.
All right, hold on a second. Before we go any further, first of all, I feel like I'm being pointed out here as the person that's responsible for making this decision and changing the outcome of this project for the town. And that's not the case. And I don't appreciate you pointing that finger at me. And that's what you're doing.
I'm sorry, I'm talking my hands, Mr. Chair.
Physically pointing the finger at me. I mean, you're, you're, you're making it appear as though I have the right to either start or stop this project when I don't. That's the fact of the matter.
Mr.
You're talking about, your, your complaint here is duly noted. All right, it's going to go into the record and we will discuss it further. So if there's any other complaints that you have, can we move on to the next one, please?
Not my intention, Mr. Chair. My apologies. Um, just so you, you get an idea of the magnitude of these buildings, this here is from the town and this is, there are only three buildings the size of what this gentleman wants to pose. One of them is the backside of Mary D. Stone, right here. The other one is the backside of JB. And the third one is, uh, one of the hotels, uh, Johnson Street, Ten Johnson Street. And that is a four-story. So you're talking about putting, gentleman wants to put four-story buildings in a residential neighborhood.
And again, this is part of the negotiation process to find out what goes through and what, what is being taken place. And this is not unusual, by the way, of the projects that were done in, um, Milbury, Upton, Grafton, and it's either Boylston or West Boylston, by the way. All the same, those are other, five other towns that are dealing with these same issues of affordable housing projects as everyone else is. So we're not the only ones addressing these issues as well. Um, and in fact, you can go and you can drive through any one of those other towns and look at, because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this particular company that's coming in here has done, if not all those projects, some of those projects. Um, including one they just finished in Milbury. So if you wanted to go and take a drive by and look at it, there's one somewhere in Milbury.
Correct. Oh, I, I have driven by them. I, I've been following this builder for the past three years. I've gone out to Berlin when the town of Berlin shut them down for a while. Um, I've gone to every ZBA meeting in Millbury. I've, I've been following this builder to see how the builder operates. I, I, I watched one of the, the board meetings, um, when he threatened the board. The gentleman in, in Shoesbury, when he assaulted the board, a, a, a resident, I believe, a Butter. Um, I, I've been watching this for a long time, Mr. Chair, long time.
Again, as a board, we've been dealing with it for almost, I don't know, I think Mr. Cussy is our longest standing member at almost twenty years now, that we've all been community volunteers trying to address this issue as well. So, you know, this is what we do. Um, we're all in this together. This isn't a we versus them or, um, anything like that. It's, we have laws to follow regardless of whether we like them or not. That's what a, our society does. And if we can negotiate to this, to the best outcome for everybody involved, that's truly our goal.
Well, and again, the main concerns, Mr. Chair, is the, the road. It's a private street. We emphasized that last night. That and the magnitude. We're not opposed to anything being built. Those, those duplexes on, on Vinyl Street would be fantastic. They blend in. It makes the, the neighborhood nice and, and cozy. Four-story buildings that are sixty-six feet high are ludicrous.
And also keep in mind, um, at the last town meeting or what, maybe two or three town meetings ago, I could be wrong, um, but they approved a new ordinance in town to allow above-two-story buildings. And I think you're a member of the town meeting, correct?
Yep, yes, sir. You're, you're correct.
So let's all make sure that we're all holding a nice big slice of the pie here.
But it was in certain areas. It was in certain areas. It wasn't to drop out a six-story building in a residential neighborhood.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman.
I believe it was, uh, Route twenty was the area they agreed on that. Not small, little tiny sixteen-foot roads where the, the fire engines have a hard time coming down.
Well, I'm sure that's not type of road that they would probably complete, but I understand that. But, so, um, again, there's no decisions being made this evening at all. This is an ongoing process. Um, and we've heard those concerns. Do you have any other ones then?
At this time, no, Mr. Chair, I do not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
And I, before this gentleman sits, because I may have a follow-up question for him, if, if that's okay. Just bringing us back to the topic that he had brought forward, um, with, with this. It, it raises an interesting point. Um, I have to be honest. So, um, the first, there are two pages here, right? So the first is eighteen parcel fourteen, the second is eighteen fifty. Fourteen is clearly marked. It, it doesn't have the required road frontage. Because it's landlocked by parcel fifteen. But parcel fifteen has the required road frontage. Now, it's beyond, far beyond my pay grade to know if, in fact, these lots are being combined. If that changes the determination of it being landlocked and unbuildable. But for argument's sake, um, given this gentleman's concern, I think what you've stated was, was, was absolutely correct. So we take this into the record under consideration. And then perhaps, um, notwithstanding, um, the, um, really skilled, really skilled eyes that we already have at the table here that invest in, in this kind of, of, um, this kind of, of law practice every day. Um, you know, perhaps we could get a judgment on this and see if it holds any weight. I do remember this being brought up at the last meeting. I was curious about it. And, and I, for one, would be very curious to see someone that has the credentials and, and the knowledge, um, to see if this has any sand.
I'm, I'm certain that we could request it to be reviewed by the town attorney. I mean, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I, I would.
Let me just forward it for.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I, I would use that as a nuclear option because recognizing that my, my aim is to, you know, just as a volunteer, is to never cost the town a penny if I can avoid it. So, you know, recognizing that that does, I just wonder if there's a way, um, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Allard would know, uh, but if there's a way that we could just flush this out and see if it has any integrity, um, and, and has any teeth.
That's what I do.
Okay. So, so, yeah, so, and with, with respect.
I'll take care of it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, and, and with respect, I, I think that going to the town attorney is, is a, is a good option, but, but I'm, I'm penny conscious when it comes to something that could eventually float back into my property tax.
And if it, yes, and if, if it can be something that can be managed at the office level, there's absolutely no.
Yeah, that would, that would be my only request because I, I would be, I, I was curious, last, last meeting, I'm curious now to see if, in fact, this has any weight whatsoever. And it may be, and, and if for nothing else, you know, perhaps an explanation is the combination of the two lots. Um, and if there is, if there is a response to it, uh, perhaps we can do at least that and satisfy this, this gentleman's challenge to, you know, why, why couldn't they build, they couldn't build before, why can they build now? I think it's, it's a reasonable, I would ask the same question, quite frankly.
Take a look at it.
Thank, thank you. So if we could, if he doesn't mind taking the action, I, I think, I just think it's an interesting point that gets, that gets raised.
Um, okay. Anybody else have any questions? Or do you have any more questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Chair, um, if, if you are going to send it to town attorney, can we find out about the road? I mean, I, I have spent a lot of money pulling all of the deeds on the road. And all the deeds say we have the right to maintain the road. It doesn't say anything else about reconstructing or doing anything else. We own to the center of the road. The Irish Perry Realty Trust was abolished back in nineteen sixty-two, I believe. Um, according to all the paperwork I got from, might even been sooner than, that I've gotten from my attorneys.
And I'm just asking, just for the record.
Yes, sir.
So you had paid, have you paid for like title searches?
Yes, yes, I did, Your Honor. Uh, Mr. Chair, yes, sir.
I wasn't really sure what, you know, I know, I heard you discuss them at the last meeting and I heard your, uh, kind of introduction on the history of it. But I didn't really understand the commitment to it. So you, you paid an attorney to do a title search on all these lots around here?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
The area of Perry Place, what I'm talking about.
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns on that one?
Yeah, I just, is the town taking this road over? Do we know? Is it, is it becoming a town road if this project was to go forward?
No, he wants to keep it private, but he wants to put in public access for walking trails and playgrounds and a dog park and that's going to infringe on all of our rights as owners of the road. There is, there is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chair, because I, I know you're more knowledgeable of this than I am and, or the building inspector. Is it there an over-usage law on the road? Um, we're talking two thousand plus vehicles a day that I sat down with the fire chief and we added up the calculations, uh, that the builder opposed. Um, he said two and a half vehicles per unit and times that. And then he said that we're going to go in and out of the, the street, I believe it was five times a day. And then you added up the delivery vehicles from Amazon and the trash and, uh, obviously the mail trucks already get on there, so it doesn't, that's not, but that's, that's one heck of a usage on going across our properties. Yes, he has the right to maintain the road. The road that's in front of his property. We have the right to maintain the road in front of our property.
And again, and also the town has a ten-foot setback into your property as well if it needs to, for utility purposes.
Not, not on a private road, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well, maybe not necessarily on a private road, but regardless, for the ninety other percent of us that live in town that aren't on private roads, they do.
Yes, correct. You're correct. Um, would the building inspector like to chirp in on any of that?
As far as what?
As the, the usage or the, the owning to the center of the road or?
Own to the center of the road.
Right.
That's correct. Um, I don't believe, uh, that you can do your own betterments, but I don't believe that betterments can't be done to your road either. I live on a private road. And the town comes in and does some grading and we have to do some of our own grading. Yeah, but I don't know if any over-usage or anything like that, and I'm not anywhere near a situation like you are, so I can't really comment on, uh, on the, the amount of usage and things like that. That will be up to the, the experts.
Okay.
Okay. So that was the response for the road issue and with the building inspector?
Yes. Obviously, traffic's going to be a huge, you know, until we see a traffic study, uh, it would be hard to determine anything.
Right, and they, they said, we haven't got any of those things back tonight. This is, again, a fact finder and a introductory and listening to the concerns that we can hopefully address in the future.
Right. I'm good for now.
Ms. Roach, you look like you're patiently waiting over there.
Um, I'd, I'd like to hear from the Butter, I guess, on the issue of the landlocked parcel.
Okay.
Still need to handle.
Nothing right now.
Hi, buddy.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment on the zoning determination letter. I, I could be wrong. Uh, I think it's still giving it to town council, but my read of it is, as far as I know, zoning determinations, since it's by the, uh, by the agent of the board, it can be appealed under section seven and uh, under our zoning bylaws, nine dot one dot two dot one, uh, any decision of the building inspector can be appealed to us. So I think that ultimately the town council would say they should have come to us and appealed the zoning determination. I could be entirely wrong, but just.
No, I appreciate that.
They being, they being the original contenders of, of trying to build at that time.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah.
Intenders isn't really a word, is it?
Hmm, works for me. I know.
Excuse me.
So, no, that's, that's another interesting point. So, um, okay. Uh, again, this, you know, and I, I think, um, if there's any concerns with who owns up to the center of the road, I think that's more of a civil matter. If it's not, right? I don't think that's necessarily a, I think that has to be resolved before we could even get into that.
I, I believe on a private road, the way that the, the road is diced up, it comes from your property pins ninety degrees to the center of the road is what you own.
Okay.
So if you're on a corner and that, and it comes in, it hits the road from your pin and it's ninety degrees straight to the center.
Okay.
That's how it's always calculated. I've had engineering done.
Sure.
On roads and things such as that to determine I own both sides of the road. So my line goes up to one, then crosses back and then back over. Because, because they don't line directly across from each other.
So interestingly enough, if they do own to the center of the road and that is the standard, then, and again, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Isn't there some kind of a compensation that should take place for those Butters then? If they're losing a particular part of their land, if they own up to the center of the road based on a private roadway. Again, I'm not an expert in that matter and I just, I'm just questioning, but it seems to me that.
Yeah.
I think we need to.
It's way different than that.
It's way different than that. Okay, that's good to know because I know I'm totally off base. That's fine.
I mean, you own, as far as responsibilities, I believe you are actually responsible for the grading on that to, for, for, for public safety or the town can charge you. And, but it's also, it's, it's, it's like it's an easement.
Right, understood. Yeah.
Every, has full use of it. You cannot deny anybody to cross it.
Access of it, right.
And things such as that. And, and I don't believe that you have control over who can, who could cross. If, I suppose if there was a bridge and it had a weight limit, then yeah, you might have some, something on that, but, uh.
Mr. Chairman, this might be a good time to give the applicant an opportunity to jump back in and comment on some of the things that have been discussed.
So can we do that then? Let's, let's go ahead.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair and Board.
Some of the concerns.
We need more information on private roads.
They might actually have some answers that we don't.
Yeah.
Evening. Steve Venencasa. Um, we explored this issue about the road, um, right early on the project and we did discuss a, a number of things about the road and I'm sorry if I'm repeating what. a, a number of things about the road, and I'm sorry if I'm repeating what we had already said at previous meetings, but we acknowledged the road is a private road. We acknowledged that everyone owns to the middle of the road. We acknowledged the road is 16 feet wide in places. So that's why day one, we started out with the engineering department and DPW, we walked the road, we looked at, see, we saw what improvements would they like to see, what improvements. We're restricted by the width of the road and by the wetlands. So it, it was determined that we can get 24 feet out of the road width, and, and we could either do a 20-foot travel lane and a 5-foot sidewalk, or we could do a 24-foot wide road. It was determined to do a 24-foot wide roadway. So we had already come to some kind of a gentleman's agreement, nothing formal, that we were going to be doing a 24-foot wide road. Also, there was discussion about, with the fire department and the access, and we've had a number of conversations with Jake Newmark of the fire department about what he would like to see for life safety, because we know, in the end of the day, we can do a 40B, we have a lot of latitude on 40B, but no one can do a project with any life safety issues. So that, that's a given, and we know that. So that was really critical to us that we, that we addressed those concerns with the fire department. We made a number of changes due to the fire department. One of them was, the road is, is low in one spot, I don't know how many feet that is, 100 feet to it, there's some length of the road, it, it's low, and that section by the, and, and so they said it floods by a foot, and that would, could create a safety issue with the fire department. We agreed to raise the road, and then, then we heard all the way back from the abutters, you're gonna flood me out? Well, this section of the road is where there's no home, no homes on this road, so it's not gonna affect the abutters, however, it will make the road safer. As far as the capacity of the road, it's 16 feet wide. I think if we came in here and said we weren't gonna do any improvements, then I think you'd be justified in saying this road can't handle that capacity. We're not taking that position. We're taking the position of what can we do to make this road a better road? What can we do to make this road work? So we're not, we're not hamstringing the town in any sense, we're saying what is it that we can do to make this road capacity? Now, we're not a traffic engineer, I don't think there's any traffic engineers out there, but we've hired a traffic engineer, and you've had a peer review. So we defer, we would defer to our traffic engineer to say that this works, and, and your peer review to say agree, not agree. So we're gonna leave the, the fact that whether this road is overburdened or not to the traffic engineers. And, and again, we're not proposing to leave the road alone with no improvements, we're proposed to do whatever it takes to make the road safe and passable, and make it pass the sniff test from the traffic engineers and your peer review. So we think that position is a solid position. As far as, we've heard a number of abutters, because everyone wants affordable housing, but no one wants it in their neighborhood. So we know that we, we get our position, and, and by the way, we get our position in every single project, not just this, this project. And, and if, and if the previous speaker, you know, could repeat some of the things that are said at the meeting, the last plan, the last ZBA meeting in, in Milbury, we were referred to as having the crown jewels of projects in the town. And we, we feel very proud about that. And, and if you look up the addresses of the properties that we built, we think they're the best properties out there, and we're very proud, and we welcome anyone to look at those. And if the previous speaker could take some pictures of those projects and bring them in here, I think we'd all be impressed. However, I was going somewhere else on this, I got off track a little, sorry. Project. I guess I'll have to let it go at that.
That's okay, no worries.
I did have one, I did have one other thought I wanted to bring out, but I can't remember what it was. All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Oh, I know what it was.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I know what it was. So, so I was going with this, that, that it's a private road, that each homeowner, like the building inspector referred to, owns to the middle of no, I, I've known this, I've been building 50 years, and have known this probably 40 of those years. However, everyone on the road, so let's just say I had, you know, there was a, there was a, I had a right of way through one of these gentleman's properties, and he, and he, and I couldn't, couldn't get through with my car, I have the right to improve that road. So, so we do have the right to improve that road, and we're taking that right, and we think that benefits all. You know, the only reason why someone would say not to improve it would be to try to stop an affordable housing project, which we think is not the wrong, not the right thing to do. So, yes, it's a private road, yes, they own to the middle of the road, yes, we have the right to improve the road, no, we're not gonna overburden that road, we're gonna make sure it, it, it is built to a higher standard through input from the engineering department, the DPW department, the selectmen, and yourself. One other thing I heard that, that I didn't like is that they say that we're gonna overburden the area, we're gonna build a playground, we're gonna do a walking trail. We happen to think those are all good things, and, and we've gotten positive feedback in the communities. However, if the neighborhood says, no, we don't want any walking trails open to the public, no, we don't want the swing set open to the public, you can make that call, Mr. Chairman, you could say, we want that to be private, and, and therefore, and it might be under the conception that you're not gonna get any abutters or neighbors or less traffic, we're okay with that too. So if, if that's your prerogative, we're fine with that. So just wanted to say that last part. Thank you very much.
While you're up here, if I can offer to the board any other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I just, some people like that 16-foot road, the people that live there, that's what they like.
Yes.
They don't, you know, a lot of people speeding through, and once you upgrade the road, the traffic, people are gonna go fast.
Yeah.
They like that quiet little 16-foot road. And some of your projects, I saw one in Milbury, it's, it's not really like tucked behind people's houses. I mean, this is a private area down there, you know, it's got a nice private road. It's, it's, to me, it's a terrible spot to put it. I mean, I'm not against 40B housing at all, but this one's, this is a tough spot for me. It's a quiet area, and like I said, and then coming out of there, the houses are tight, they're close to the road, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of traffic, and, and people are gonna go fast. And trying to get out onto Auburn Street is gonna be tough, so they're gonna go to Rockland, it's, I mean, I just, I really feel that it's a tough spot to put it. People like that quiet little area.
A number of comments I, I would agree with, and the bumpy of that road is, the narrow road is, the slower the traffic go. However, you know, we can, we can address those with, with other things, we can, we can signage, we can, we can enforce it with the police department, obviously, we can enforce that, you can enforce that with the police department. We, we are building a residential project in a residential area. It does not look like any of the houses that exist there, but that's how you get affordable housing, that's how you get housing that can, that can accommodate people with disabilities through a taller building with elevators, their building is much more efficient to live in it, the, the heating bills, electric bill, lighting bills, it's super efficient. Number one is because it's being built at today's standards, number two, it's because it's a rectangle that's built and you have heated spaces around it, so it, it's, it's a lot more affordable to live in those type of units. So those are the pluses and minuses, and I agree, it doesn't look like any of the existing ones. However, the landscaping we do, the lighting we do, the buildings, the facades, the colors, we think our buildings are really beautiful. Again, it was described as the crown jewel of Milbury, so just leave it at that.
Well, Milbury's pretty, it's a, it's a nice building, no question.
That's the kind of work we wanna do.
Just this location, I think it's really tough.
We're but 290.
Traffic lies, encroaching on the neighbors, it would be nice if you could find another place to, to put it on a, a different area in town. I just think this is a really tough area for me, 'cause it's a, they like their private road, just, you know, they live there for a reason, and they've been there a very long time.
Sure.
So this is a tough spot.
Okay. Ms. Roach?
So, in fair disclosure, I was not at the last meeting, I did watch it, I did fill out the Mullins Rule paperwork so that I could vote tonight if it came to a vote, I think we all know it's not going to. We would wanna see traffic studies and all those things, but I do have a lot of questions. So my first one is, in, in fair disclosure, I grew up on Rockland Road, I learned how to drive my car on Perry Street. It's a very small road, it's a very quiet neighborhood. Can you speak to, does the project work with a smaller amount of units in a, in a smaller scale? I understand it's the crown jewel, but it's not if you live in the neighborhood.
It's not what?
It's too big for this area. Does this project work with a smaller number of houses, a shorter building, less buildings? Explain to us why it does not work on a smaller scale.
Well, like, like I said earlier, you know, we could propose pretty much anything with a 40B. Let's say we came in with a thousand units, okay? We propose a thousand units to build there, I, I'm just using extreme, you know? We wouldn't have enough, we wouldn't have enough parking, so it, it would not work. We, we couldn't actually, we couldn't make everything work. So when we come in and look at a site, we make sure that everything works, so the parking has to work, the grading has to work, the water and sewer has to work, the drainage has to work. We wanted to look, I, I have a certain way. Now, again, we could, we could actually put a thousand units there if we were to build a thousand-unit parking garage next to it, but that's not affordable housing, and, and that wouldn't work for us. So we, we present, we try to, we, affordable housing is high-density, affordable housing to us is elevated buildings, which means, you know, multi-story buildings. My, my mom could move into this building tomorrow, she lives in assisted living right now, she could move into it because of that elevator, because of the wider doorways, because we build the kitchens so that it can handicap accessible, it works. If, if, if you moved into this building here and you had a skiing accident, I have a killington next week, you could still hop on and, or run your wheelchair through there, and, and you could live there. So it, it works for, it works for younger people in the town that wanna stay in the town, that, they're very attractive units with the nice wood finishes and the tall ceilings and the nice-looking cabinets and, and so on and so on. So it's, it's a nice way, you get this same type of look if you go in a single-family house, would not be affordable. So you get, you get younger people able to move into town in a nicer unit, people that, that wanna have a little nicer standard to live in, and you get senior population, and we get some disabled people, and we get some affordable, we got 25% affordable also. So in order to meet all those needs, that's how we get, that's how we come up with this, this 150 units, that's what works on the site, that's why we proposed this with that site. You could do the unit with five, with five houses to 20 houses, it, it's not affordable housing then when we do something like that. This is the affordable housing framework. And, and again, if you go further into the city, they do this on, they do 150 acres on half-acre land, but again, they do underground parking, they have, they have better transit system, you know, we have limited tram. We're expecting just about everyone here to own an automobile, and that's why we need the ratio of the parking areas. We think it works really well, the fact that we are but 290 on one side, so we have no neighbors on one side, we're kinda secluded on the end of the street, you get off the exit and you come right around, and you're hardly on any roads at all, yet you have to drive down Perry Ave, but you're not driving all through the whole town to get to this development here, you're quick on and off right there. So it really works well from our point of view. I hope that answered your question, ma'am.
So 75 units, if you cut it in half, doesn't work for you?
Not really.
Financially?
Is it just financially, or are we trying to build affordable housing?
Okay. What's the price points for the rentals?
For the what?
What's the price point? Like, what are they gonna rent at? What's the affordable units gonna rent at? What's the market rate one's gonna rent at? Do you have that? Do you know?
I, I can, I can spill off the numbers, but I don't want you to hold me to them, because I, I don't keep those. I, I think it's around 1,500 for one bedroom, and 17 for two, and 19 for three on the affordables, and I think that same unit would get like 2,200 for conventional, and 25 for a two-bedroom, and like around 2,900 for a three. And, and again, I'm just peeling out numbers, I, I, don't hold me to those numbers, please, but they're close.
I just wanted a ballpark.
Yeah.
And, I'm sorry, 25% you said is gonna be affordable?
Yes. And, and you know that the way this works, the 25% affordable in the town gets credit for the whole 100% of the units, as a, as a 40B.
Okay. So I do kinda wanna get back to the landlocked issue. Do you have any comments on, not necessarily the letter from the ZBA, 'cause I think that's a separate matter, but the biggest parcel is technically landlocked?
Agreed, no, no question, but, but, but if I have a parcel of land, and it's, and I do this as a developer all the time, I, I might look and find a parcel of land that it's, it has no frontage, and I can buy it for $100,000, say, and then I could buy a small little piece of land in the front, they would have frontage, and I buy that for $100,000, I spent $200,000, and I could probably create five lots out of it, and each lot's worth $100,000, and that's, you know, that's smart development, and you're just putting parcels together. So I don't doubt that this other person got denied on building a, trying to build a house on a lot with no frontage, and the building inspector's, that's a, that's a no-brainer, he's gonna do that every time, he's gonna say, no frontage, you have no access, how, how can you make that work? So by, by adding the second parcel, and, and I'm not sure how this all happened with this previous person, I don't know anything about the history, but we know we have a parcel, two parcels, and we own both of them, and if we owned two more parcels, we'd do a different So it's, it's not apples for apples, this, this whole thing with this lot and this frontage and this buildable, that's not, just not apples for apples. One of the parcels happens to be the same one, that's the only thing, but it's not the same, it's just not the same.
Okay. I'll disagree, but, um, okay, for now, that's it for me.
Excuse me, I, I do wanna hear from everybody else here.
I just thought we would get through this one particular section, then I'll open it back up to the abutters again.
The proposed road entering the area, by your calculations, how close are you coming, yes, we've been in a drought, okay, lately, but how close are you coming to that wetland?
Well, right now, there's a culvert there somewhere, and, pardon me, my nephew maybe will look it up, I'm sorry. 30, why don't you come up for just a second?
James Venacasa, the plan I'm looking at's printed 11 by 17, so it's not exactly to scale, but roughly, I would say 30 to 40 feet from the wetlands.
To that wetland area?
To the wetland area, where the, you're asking where the entrance to the community is opposed to the wetland area?
As you're coming on the road, you're looking to enter the property.
Correct.
With more to the right, you have to stay so far away from one person's land, but if you say you're gonna be 40 feet?
Again, I'm, I don't wanna quote, but probably 30 to 40 feet, yeah.
So are you saying right, right where, where Perry Ave ends and our driveway starts, is that where you saw it come up to?
Yes.
Because I didn't know if you're talking about the road itself, because the road itself goes through a large wetland area.
Yeah, Perry, Perry Street goes between the, you know, those wetlands on each side, and that's what, that's what floods over.
More like a lake on either side at certain times of the year.
Sure.
All right. Even though I, I tend to disagree with your answer, I've got, I've got your answer.
Okay. And we can go back, I'll, I'll go back and we can, we can scale it and give you the exact, the exact number, if that makes you feel more comfortable.
We'll just fall back in for now, we'll get the exact number, sorry.
Yeah.
It's off and on, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Bush?
I don't have anything right now.
All reserve. Okay. Do I have any other abutters that would like to speak? So if you guys haven't, excuse me, gentlemen, if you haven't signed in yet, if there is a sign-in sheet, if you could please do so, and then please come up, go ahead right now, come on up, give us your name, address, talk about your concerns, that's what we're here for, to work these things through.
I already signed in. Paul Docree, 32 Perry Place. Yeah, I guess, I got some concerns. Yeah, I'm not against affordable housing, but I'm right next to this, I'm gonna be looking out my window at four stories high, and as far as, you know, the road? And as far as, you know, the road, he mentioned last time, well, after he gets done with this project, they mentioned who wants, who's taking care of the road? They said, well, the residents are. I'm, we're doing that now. We take care of the road now. We have the town drop off fillings at the end of the road and we fill in all the potholes. So we're doing that road now. There's a private sewer main that comes down that road. When we put it in, the town didn't want anything to do with it. So we went to Jeff Mitchell at the sewer department. They, we paid a developer, a contractor to put the main in and it was privately owned now. Now I was told he can go around it. He doesn't have to tie into that or use that main. And I was told nobody can run another main down that road. Now all of a sudden, that changes. Well, let's just go around that.
Can I just ask, who told you that nobody else could run a main down that road?
Jeff Mitchell, when he was in charge of the sewer department. That was, and we came right in front of the board and had it pass as a private main because the town didn't want anything to do with it. We went to the town and asked them if they could run a main down. They said, we will not do anything with that because it's a private road. If you want it done, you do it. So after we had it done, the town came and inspected it. They said, okay, we'll take it over. And I said, well, wait a minute, we just dished out all this money to have this done. Why didn't you people do that? They said, well, you can go back to the town and have it pass as a private main. So we did. We've had it pass a private main and it's listed. Then the other concerns is, has anybody talked to the other departments? The fire department, the police department, the water department? You know, we're all going by hearsay. This is what they told me. This is what they're telling me. Oh, the fire department's all, all on board with this. Has anybody talked to them?
Well, I know that they have frequent meetings during the week.
Right, right, but.
In between our meetings here.
Exactly.
And the DCG, which is the group of all the.
Just curious about that.
Leaders in town, you know, they vet these projects and they have these discussions quite frequently. I don't know when the last time they discussed this particular topic, but I'm certain that they probably have in the past.
I was concerned about that too.
Sure. And I, can I just ask, what are the DCG meetings usually scheduled? Any idea?
Wednesdays, every other Wednesday.
Every other Wednesday?
Um, yes. I did request comments from all the departments. I think you got a couple of comments at the last meeting.
Okay.
Not every department has commented.
Okay. So a request did go out for department heads to comment. Not everybody has commented yet. They have received some, but not all responses yet. So that is something that they're going to be working through as well.
All right.
That's understood.
Like Mr. Lai just said a few meetings ago, that turnaround down there, that's a cul-de-sac. That was put in by the town because they didn't have a way to plow. They were doing it for safety, to plow and have the ambulances and stuff come down. But that's all part of our land, that part. You know, it's not part of the cul-de-sac or whatever they mentioned, but, yeah, as far as, as far as this development, you're right. I could see affordable housing coming in, a couple of duplexes, that. But as far as this project on that street, that's insane. You know, come down at 5 o'clock and try to pull out onto Auburn Street to go somewhere. It's nuts. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Yes, sir.
My name is Rich McPherson. I'm from 18 Highland Street. And first of all, I'm very impressed at how well versed you guys are in all of this and I appreciate you. So thank you. I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, but let's say after we do the roads, we improve the road and we find that the houses on that street now have more flooding. What requests do the, do the owners have to, to go back? How is that process moved forward? I mean, we're going off of your engineering and I assume they're good, but in the event that there's water damage caused by this down the road, what requests does the town have or what requests does the individual have that live in those houses? Now, I don't live down there, but I'm worried for my neighbors. My second thought is, we're talking about how many units? What's that going to do to our school system? We are a community of a high number of retirees who have limited income, very, very limited income. Our taxes have already gone up substantially from the school system that's there now. And my understanding is, is that school system is already overloaded with students. Now we're going to be bringing in, you're saying young families into this environment? Young families have children. Two, three, four. I have a family of four. All those kids are going to be going to our schools. We have issues now with the schools already overrun. I, I just want to make sure that we keep that also. And so we're talking about taxes increasing. We're talking about, you're, you're saying that the speed on the street just can be enforced by the police. Now we're taxing our police department even more. We may need to hire more policemen to come down and do what you're asking. That's more dollars to the tax people. That's, that's an issue. The other thought is, is I understand it's very convenient coming off of 290, going down the road to, to where they live. Have you tried to get off of 290 at that exit? Have any of you tried to get off on 290 at that exit? It's already backed up all the way down, all the way down to, what's the name of the street? I'm sorry. The, the next exit. Oh, yes. Already. You have 290, you have 290 back up already and heavens forbid somebody wants to jump on the mass pike. All that is already backed up. And now you're talking about bringing in all these units and all these extra people trying to get off onto 290, off of 290 onto Auburn Street to take that turn. That's just, so these are other issues that I don't think we've actually considered. I just want to make sure that we're looking at the whole picture, not just one little, one little development, because it's not just one little development. We're talking about everybody in Auburn having to pay more money in taxes, having more people in school. It's going to tax our school system in terms of the number of people. We might have to hire more teachers. I think it's going to be a big deal. Thank you. I appreciate you all. I do appreciate you all.
I can say that for, for the concern of water being diverted onto anyone's property, there are a lot of laws on the books preventing anyone from discharging or moving water to anyone else's property. That's just completely illegal. I couldn't even do it to my neighbor. So there's a whole bunch of recourse of action. In terms of our overall scope of traffic issues in this town, I don't think anybody could disagree in the last six months or so or year that we've seen an incredible amount of increase in traffic throughout the town. I live right down the street here and I can see the pike. I see it every day. I fully understand that. But I don't think this board has that purview of discussing larger and grander traffic problems, unfortunately. But go ahead, sir. So that was just my point on that.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Steve Chambers, Bancroft Street. There is a limited scope and safety is something within that scope. The safety issues will continue to migrate out, away from the project. That's something that, you know, obviously could potentially be negotiated for this. I do like the line of questioning and thank you for being such a fan of affordable housing. Would you consider increasing, instead of 25%, increasing the number of units that actually get it or reducing the AMI number down to 60% instead of 80% to actually make it affordable for the residents that this is supposed to help? That would be something I'd like to see if this were to, to continue to go forward. But if he's truly a fan of affordable housing, let's try to make it affordable. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments, sir. Thank you very much. Anybody for the board, do we have any responses for the last couple of commenters? But I just want to make sure I didn't.
You know, I just, safety's a huge issue. Everyone keeps bringing up the same issue. It's a, it's a tight area and it's a huge safety issue to me and I think for the town, all the residents in the area, because that is going to, you know, not everybody's going to go right out Perry Street. It's going to go through all those neighborhoods and it's tight. I mean, it's, it's, the houses are what, 10 feet off the road? So that's a major issue and that needs to be addressed. We have to see a traffic study for sure.
Right. So we obviously know that traffic is one of our major concerns here and traffic management obviously is one of the concerns of all of our projects in town here, clearly. Anybody other abutters that also?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Could you just go ahead and introduce yourself, sir?
Yeah, my name's Thomas Downer. I live at 29 Perry Place and I'm one of the houses that's, that gets flooded even without, you know, before this project. My house gets flooded already. I mentioned that in my, in the previous meeting or the last meeting that I got about an inch of water in my, in my basement, just, you know, just from regular rainfall. And so I am worried about having the road razed and, you know, what's going, how is that going to affect my house and all that? And like I said, I already have, I'm in the area of flood, in a flood area, so I have to have flood insurance. So that's, I am worried about that. Number two, and again, this is getting back to the safety part, is if we're going to have families on our end, where, where we live, that's going to be more pedestrians, in my opinion, that's going to be walking. And if you're going to increase the road, and I think it was just brought up on the board, you increase the width of the road, faster traffic. And they're saying they don't, you know, they're not, they don't want to put a sidewalk on the road. So where does that leave the pedestrians as far as safety, you know, if we're, you know, walking the road? No, that's another one of my concerns is, is pedestrian walking.
Thank you. Any other abutters that would like to speak?
Yeah, this gentleman's been waiting, Mr. Chairman.
Tim Daly, 25 Rockland Road. I'm not at a butter, but I spoke at a couple of meetings before about, about these concerns. And I did some investigation into the schools. The schools are full. The high schools, all the school, I'm not going to go through the whole thing because I know you don't want to be here till 11:30. All the schools are full. So that's a huge issue as far as that. The gentleman says that it's a great idea to get off 290 and go down Perry Street. If there's ever someone sitting at the corner of Perry and Auburn Street, we will be attending their services because there is no hope that you're coming off the ramp and then have to make a quick turn. That is, that is not good. Just a couple of other points that I know you've already made, but the road can be 25 feet, 50 feet, 80 feet, you can make it however more you want. After the first time you come out and you try to come out Perry Street to Auburn Street and you realize that's not going to happen, right? The next day you come out, you come out, you take a right onto Pearl, you take a left onto Highland and you come to the end of Highland and Auburn Street and you can't get out there. So then the next day you go out, you try another route because maybe you put in ways. And ways says, go down Perry Street to Rockland Road and go Rockland Road to Auburn Street. And you don't get out there either. So it's a big, that's a big issue. The road can be as wide as it wants. It's out of the property that, that is, is the issue. And finally, one of your members made a very nice comment and the gentleman said that he's not in this, that he just likes 40Bs. Okay, well, this is about money. And if we sit here tonight and we think that he's not interested in making money in the town of Auburn, then something's terribly wrong. Because this isn't about just loving 40Bs. This is about cash in their pocket. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Danny Lagers, 39 Perry Place. Couple of weeks ago, the police department has deemed the intersection of Perry Street and Auburn Street, and I brought up here just to refresh you, the fourth most dangerous intersection in town. I'm going to, I'm going to bounce around here, so please forgive me. The gentleman there, he, he said it's about money. And the other gentleman spoke about the schools. This gentleman's going to be paying $400,000 in taxes on this property, okay? He's going to be raking in at his figures that he just gave, $5.8 million a year. So it is about money. It's all about money. Representative Frost, Senator Mike Moore, police chief, the fire chief, and it's all in the letter to the state, has all said it's not the place for this complex. I believe one of the board members has said, it's not the place, it is too large. Senator Moore and Representative Frost walked it. They walked the road along with other town officials. The gentleman to your, your right, Mr. Chair, was there that day to walk it. They've all said, yes, it is not the place. It is a major, major safety concern. You just heard the builder say, yes, there's wetlands on both sides of the road, all the way up. How are we going to go from a 16 foot road to a 24 foot road if we don't fill in the wetlands? The condominiums are not going to give them the property to fill in on the west side of it. Mr. Downer is not going to give them the property to fill in on his area. And Mr. Bolivar at number four is not giving them the property to fill in, to widen the road. And I spoke to the representative from National Grid. I had a meeting with down there. I'd have to go back, it was about a year or so ago. You cannot get any closer to those high tension towers. So how are we going to widen this road to 24 feet if nobody's giving them anything? They don't want anything. National Grid owns that property. The town has a right of way next to National Grid and I'm sure the town's not going to say, hey, take some of our property. I just want to make sure you can line your pockets. We don't care as residents if they give $100,000 to the town for fireworks or for the Fourth of July committee or for anything else, because the town's making out, the residents are going to be the ones to deal with it all in the aftermath. Mr. Downer just spoke about the flooding. It floods over the road. You've heard the builder just say that. It floods over the road.
I'm going to interrupt because in the interest of time here, I think I've let you go over more than your acquired three minutes here. My question to you is however, though, you spoke to, you said Senator Moore and Representative Frost, correct?
Yes, correct, sir.
Wrote letters on behalf of it saying it's not the right place.
That's correct, sir.
Did either of those gentlemen introduce legislation to modify 40B in any way that you know of?
I do not. They're not against the 40B.
That's not what I'm asking.
They're not against it.
Did either of those two elected officials take, go out of their way to file legislation to modify 40B or give zoning boards more power to control these projects? No, they did not. So those letters mean absolutely nothing is what my point to you is. Because without a modification of 40B or giving us the tools necessary to control it, those letters to me are basically birdcage liners. Because if they're not going to give you the power to do anything with it, they just appeased you as a, as a, as a constituent.
Okay, what about, what about the police chief and the fire chief, sir?
What are those letters going to do? Did they call the state and ask for the 40B to be modified?
They, they're in the packet that went to the state.
To have the law of 40B modified?
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand.
That's my whole point. Nobody is asking for this. So until we get somebody that wants to rewrite 40B for us and give zoning boards the authority to stop or completely control these projects, we don't have that authority. None of that is here. So lip service on the elected officials' part doesn't serve me any, any good when I'm sitting here and neither of those two people are in this audience answering the questions. So I'm all set with the elected officials as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, I digress. Is there anybody else that have any questions or concerns right now?
Mr. Chairman, have we given every opportunity for anyone that wanted to speak this evening?
Do we have any other people that want to speak, just in general consensus? Go right ahead, sir. I just still, I need you to go to the lectern though, please, sir.
A number of people got up and spoke and said a number of things that we don't agree with and we're happy to address any of those concerns that the board would like us to address.
Anything else?
I'm just going to make one comment because I think the schools is something that obviously is a concern. It's a concern for us. But the 40B statute is pretty clear that overburdening of schools is not enough to deny a project. I think when the legislature created this, and if you really want to get into 40B... 40B, you should go all the way back to how it originally started and why we need 40B. It's pretty interesting, actually. Um, but I have kids in this school, too. But we technically cannot use that as a reason to deny, because in theory, every town in the whole Commonwealth would say, oh, we don't, all the schools denied. Um, so I just, I want you guys to understand that I think, as people who have children who either have gone or go to the schools, like Ms. Bush and I, um, unfortunately, um, burden on the school system is not something that we can deny on. Um, believe me, we wish it was. We all know what our tax bill looks like. Um, we know we had just built new schools recently, but, um, it, it's pretty clear that for us, that's not a reason for us to deny, so I don't want anyone to think that we're ignoring that. Um, certainly, that's a concern. Um, but it doesn't, we don't have any power to deny based on that. Really, safety is the main thing that we can address. Certainly, the flooding, again, I said it before, I grew up on Rockland Road, it was flooded 80% of the time. Um, if it rains, the people, it, I missed a daily's house, actually, like, up a little, it, it's wet all the time. Um, and that directly flows out to the back of where this property is by Mr. Largis's house. Um, if you've driven by there anytime during the rain, which I have multiple times since this project came about, there is always water there, always. Um, and I think traffic study, you know, obviously, we don't have the peer review back, so, but all three of those streets, the Perry Ave, Highland Street, Rockland Road, my first car accident, taking a left out of Rockland Road, smash. Um, it's, it's very hard there to turn. You can't see all the way to Dooley's, and cars come whipping around that corner. You can't see past Packet Hog Acres, because that's also a corner. As someone who lived on that street for her entire life, it is very hard to get out of there. And Highland Street is worse, actually, probably, because they have even less of a line of sight. You have a little bit more, um, in front of, it's not Dairy Mart, uh, One Stop, or whatever that little convenience. Um, so I think that's sort of the concerns that we have to kind of focus on. I just, I didn't want the audience to think we don't think about the schools, we do, but unfortunately, we really don't have the right to deny because of that.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Roche is right, um, on, on all points with, with regard to the school, and I think we all share that concern, that collective concern of, of what kind of impact, um, you know, this, this volume of housing would have. But I think, a, as we lean further into the safety topic, um, I, I think for a further discussion, I, I'm interested to learn more about how this applicant is gonna work with the road, with the setbacks, and some of the things that have been described.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because I, I need to learn more, um, leaning into the safety consideration of this, of how you, how you make that happen. Um, a couple of your butters, um, you know, and I think, one part's education and one part's judgment. The education of, of how they intend to make that work, between, um, comments that have been assumed by Verizon, um, and, um, comments that have been assumed by just the sheer fact that there's a certain portion of private ownership in front of each, um, if they need some of that land to essentially make this happen. I, I just, I think in a forward discussion, learning more about what the design of that road is intended to be, and how they intend to mitigate some of those concerns. Um, because I, I would agree with, with, with Ms. Roche, that, you know, we, we, we need to focus, moving forward, on truly the safety impact of that. Um, and, and I would, for what it's worth, just to agree with Mr. Cussy earlier, that it's, um, it's a challenge to, I've been at the site, it's, it's a challenge to wrap your head around that unique, cozy, um, neighborhood, where people love to live, and have lived there for a long time. It's a challenge to see that, that kind of industrial, I know it's residential, but, I mean, you're talking about large block buildings. It's, it's hard, it's hard to understand how that's gonna fit in there and not change their lives.
Right. I, I agree with all of those concerns. And you can see, I think I've demonstrated, unfortunately, some of my frustration tonight, because we have situations here that we cannot control, and they basically leave us out in the wind, and they go, oh, well, that's just the zoning board's issue. Well, it's not. It's because it's the way the legislation was set up to begin with, it's the lack of interest in trying to edit it or correct it from there forward, and, you know, that's just the way it, the cookie crumbles, so to speak.
Well, Mr. Chairman, you and I are truly rowing on the same side of the canoe.
Yes, correct.
I mean, I, I think we, you know, but we, we straddle, and, and it may be that I just had such a long day at the office today, that I'm a little, a little less passionate this evening, um, to get on, to get on a box. But, um, but, but in all honesty, I mean, I, I, I think th, this, this project is, is going to impact their lives.
Dramatically.
And how they, and how they live in that neighborhood. Um, and that, I think, is what, the burden that we all carry, based on the narrow control that we're perceived to have.
Correct. Thank you for summing that up, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question?
You most certainly can.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, and you might not know, but do we know what our percentage currently is of housing?
That's a great question. I think we had asked that a while back.
The subsidized housing inventory is 5.24%.
Including projects under construction?
No, those do not currently count.
If we added those, what would it be?
If, when they're fully built out, and can be counted, it'll be less, like, 9.5.
If I may follow, when do they become counted?
I am going to, end of this year, what's currently built out and has certificate of occupancy, I'm gonna ask the state to add. At this point, for that project, certificate of occupancy is when they can start to count.
Okay, so the hinge pin is occupancy. The hinge pin is occupancy on when? And is there a delay from issuance of occupancy? And I appreciate the education, I'm sorry to take your time, but is, is the issuance of occupancy immediate to recalculate that number?
No.
Or, or why?
Because, because adding buildings like that on a rotating basis statewide is really not practical.
So how long of a delay from occupancy to actually recalculating that number?
Generally, it's once a year, we request the state to update it. So there's three buildings online, or soon to be a third building online, I'll ask the state to add those, um, at the end of this year. The deadline's January 10th.
And we're half. We're literally half.
Yep.
Chairman, there were so many reasons to be frustrated tonight.
It's, it's a basic, I know. And again, this is the, I, I, what I think, a lot, this is what I love to have, these open discussions, though, because people can see why we're frustrated as well as they are, and they can see, we're not trying to be on the other side of the issue. It's because literally, this, the, the creation of this law is, has great intention, but is executed very poorly. I mean, that's really just the fact of the matter, and there's not that much we can do about that.
And if we include the ones that are under construction, do we meet the exception where as long as you've added a certain amount over a certain period of time, you get relief from the 10%?
Those do not count towards safe harbor. The currently, Eastland Partners project does not count towards safe harbor at all, and it will not count towards safe harbor.
Never.
You, you said that word three times, I still don't know what.
Safe harbor.
Safe harbor.
Safe harbor is the rule, and if you're actively increasing the percentage during a certain period of time, you get relief from the 10%. Well, why won't Eastland Partners?
That only counts the first year of the eligibility. So when that was approved, 2021, it would have counted for that one year only.
Even if all three buildings weren't online?
Yes. It's only, like, if this project is approved, say, next year, they would be counted in the safe harbor only for one calendar year, and then they would fall off. Both or not.
Okay.
It's, it's a little convoluted process, but.
I think Steve, through the chair, has a comment.
Um, we have an abutter, go ahead, sir.
If I may, Steve Chambers, Bancroft Street. Uh, Dr. Menard, I believe it's when they issue the permit for construction that the safe harbor could kick in, is that correct? It's not on occupancy when safe harbor, it's on issuance of actually zoning board approval slash when the clerk certifies that. I believe that's what I was.
With, certifies a decision, correct? That starts the timeline ticking, not occupancy. Occupancy is for the subsidized housing inventory.
Correct. That, that would start the safe harbor, which counts for one year.
Correct.
70 units, I believe that was the calculation that was explained to me. So anything that's been approved, you get one year of that, and it has to be filed for, you don't just get it immediately, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that. I know I've asked similar questions in the past, um, and it is very, very frustrating to get answers, and the state process is not helpful. So again, thank you for what you guys do.
And your comments are much more tempered than mine, I must admit, because your, your, uh, your skillet being a little more gentlemanly about the, um, lack of effort on the state is, is not lost, I, I can tell you that.
I probably had a few more years to digest a lot of this.
Yeah.
Certainly, my frustration, and I know, um, Mr. Menards, or Dr. Menard's been putting a lot of effort to get more answers, so I can understand his frustration as well. And, uh, again, legislation, um, isn't going forward to help this process, so, um, there's certainly an outcry and, and a need to address it, and a need to address affordable housing, so, thank you.
I just think that it's interesting that the simple term "safe harbor," that doesn't tell you the attitude of the entire project, right? Because when the state says, well, you can get the safe harbor if you have X amount of number of apartments, which means, other than safe harbor means storm, correct?
Right.
I mean, that's how I interpret the term "safe harbor."
That, that's what you took out of that, Mr. Chairman. I think the gentleman has something to say, a, as he, as he comes up, um, I, um, I, I, I'm reminded that, um, I thought when I was a young man, that I would have more temperance when I was older, and it's just not true.
Okay, so I don't think, honestly, as much as it's, I, I would like to keep these hearings going, as lo, and I will keep them going as long as necessary, but I don't necessarily think that we've, we're, at this point, we're not really gathering any more new information to discuss this evening. So I think it would be best interest if we moved on, with the respect of our other applicants and our other business that we still have to attend to, even though it's smaller items, we still have business to attend to. So yes, sir, if you could, please.
Uh, so one of the members of board brought up school-aged children, and I know you can't deny me because of school-aged children, however, that's not really a factor, because, um, a, as I stated, uh, the market that we generally tend to get is younger people, either not married, some divorced people we get, good, good amount, um, and then we get seniors, those aren't the ones having children. It doesn't attract, um, that many families, um, contrary to what the state would like us to have, because they, we're required to do 10% three bedrooms, which they're trying to get more families. Unfortunately, we don't get a lot of children. Fortunately, unfortunately, however side of you wanna look at it, um, if, if we get, and I'm, I'm not gonna be accurate in this number, but we probably won't, won't get five school-aged children in this 150 units. The number is so low, and, and I don't wanna be caught on that, because I don't have that exact number right now, so please, don't hold me to that number, but it's really low, and I, I can go back with the accurate number. Um, so, so school-aged children is not a factor. Uh, these actually turn out to be a boon for the town for taxes. They pay a lot more taxes than they do get, than they draw, draw services, because of the low amount of school-aged children, because all the property itself will be private. So it is a boon in other developments to the town for taxes. Um, another derogatory mark, and I can't help but saying about me being a, um, only in for the money, um, I, I hope to build this and make a profit, and pay taxes, and be a good citizen. That's what we do, we're a private industry. This is not a, a government agency. We're not subsidized by governments. We go to the banks, we borrow at, at the conventional rates, we try to make the numbers work. I could tell you right now, there's five projects right now I know of, and they're non-performing, because the numbers don't work, because the costs are so high, because the interest rates are so high, and because the rents are stable right now. So, um, I hope to make a profit, and, and I'm not ashamed of that, um, because I work hard for what we do, and we produce a good product. Taxes, school-aged children, I think we're good. And, and any other items, um, the flooding, the engineers will handle that, the traffic, the engineers will handle that, so we could, we could go back and forth on that all day long, but what I say really doesn't matter, because I'm not an expert at that.
So I think if we could succinctly try to wrap this up, I think what our concerns here is drainage, obviously. Traffic safety is obviously another big concern. Flow in and out of that entire neighborhood, really.
Yeah.
Um, what were the other things that we would really, I think, overall, wanna address this evening?
I think the foot traffic, too.
The foot traffic, I, the gentleman brought up.
Yeah.
So if you could speak at a future meeting to those particular items, when the traffic studies come back, and when, uh, you know, we have more of the actual solid information in front of us, um, that might be able to, um, you know, sort of, uh, take care of some of the concerns that some of the butters have. So if we could maybe focus on those issues for the next meeting, that might be beneficial to everything, for everybody to have an idea of what we're gonna talk about, too.
Thank you. We'd also have to include the Conservation Commission, their determination.
Yes, I agree with that. And the Conserva, uh, Conservation Commission report, thank you very much for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, I'm just spitballing out here, but would it be helpful if we kind of limit agenda items as they come in in the future? So let's say that we only get the traffic study, uh, for the December. Would it be possible and helpful to say, December meeting, we're only talking about traffic this time? Just suggestion, a suggestion for, or the board, so we don't spin our wheel so much.
I think Mr. Garrett Beeding has brought up an interesting point, discussion. Um, do we wanna talk about that now, or do we wanna table it and talk about it? There's a different point. Because I do understand the value of seeing, you know, traffic study at one meeting, um, and, and traffic study can include pedestrian, et cetera, et cetera, and then we could talk about possible drainage or road improvements, I'm not really sure, that doesn't make sense, though. Or we could actually break down the meeting, and say, the first hour, we're gonna do that.
I'm not opposed to it, Mr. Chairman, it just, I, I think that it would, it would be a challenge to limit, especially based on public comment of what road we go down.
Right.
Um, and some of those comments. But I, but I do think narrowing the focus is a good intent, and so I think, I think we should give it consideration.
I think, I think it's a great idea, actually, and I think we could probably, instead of making it just the focus of one meeting, if we said, okay, for the first hour, we're gonna discuss this, and, and if it, if it runs its course, and that's enough, we can move on to the next topic, rather than trying to address each one, or, you know, struggling three, I should say. It might be a little more clear for everyone at home if we address them individually. So that's certainly a possibility, we can do it at a future hearing, I like that idea. Okay, yes, sir, are you?
I was just, I was just gonna say, we, we've, you know, we've done these a couple times, and that, we did actually do that on our last one, and it really streamlined it, and to, to your point with traffic, we have already gotten one peer review, and the engineers are going back and forth, so that one, we could possibly have that one at the next meeting, if that's something you'd be interested in, because, like I said, that is underway right now, that, you know, VHB has gotten back to us.
So I think, just for the, for the interest of focus for the next meeting, I think for the folks at home that have concerns, focus on what you're concerned about with your traffic stuff, and then these gentlemen can bring what their presentation is, and we can focus on that. If that is completed for the night, then we can move on to water management, or whatever the other things might be. I think that's probably, sounds like, at least like a plan for everybody to have it addressed for the next meeting. Okay, so if that's the case, and I don't think we really have any more fact-finding this evening, that we're taking in any more valuable information.
I have one. I just have one question through the chair for the applicant. Um, you just need to approach the lectern to answer, but, um, have, has any of your other projects that you've done, I guess 40B or not, have they abutted a private road, or is this the first time you're up against that?
This is the first one on a private road, yes.
Okay. Okay.
And, and again, we worked with the, um, originally, with, we worked with the selectmen, we met with the engineering department and, uh, planning board, and DPW, but, you know, it's been a while, and, and we're happy to go back to that, again, to, to make sure that nothing's changed on that level, because we talked about that. So we're happy to meet with the planning board, or the engineering department, the DPW, what, whatever, whoever you think we should work with, and maybe we can get that in between now and then, to make sure that what we proposed then is what they still desire today. So if we could meet with them in the meantime, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think I personally need some clarification from town council on that. I'm, I'm sure there is a way for them to, but it, it definitely raises some concerns, in my opinion.
Sure.
Um, and I'd like to town council to kind of jump in on what they can and cannot do what they can and cannot do on a private road that these people have owned for, it's never been a public road. It's always been private.
There could be case law that we don't know about out there either. I don't really know.
Sure, there is.
It could be decisions that have already been made regarding these issues. So.
Yeah, I'd be interested to get some opinion.
Okay. We can certainly refer to that.
I think that's a valid concern for that. They've been maintaining this road. You only owed to the center line.
Right.
What if they don't want to do what he wants? On that part? And maybe there is some case law, but yeah, I think we need to talk about that.
One, one, one of the key things in a private road that changes things is the road association. You know, because really, you know, the developer comes in and does the development, almost the one that owns the road and is responsible for the way they do, and then when they disappear, you're responsible to center. And there was talk probably maybe eight or 10 years ago when Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae were going to not, uh, finance any more homes on private roads that did not have a road association because they have so much problem
Yes.
with just this very issue we're struggling with right here is who owns what, who's responsible for what?
Right.
Who gets what? That, that, that really creates a, a huge problem. So just, just so that's, that's this complicated issue.
That's, yeah, I think that's a, a pretty serious issue. I don't know that it's a safety issue, but it's, it's certainly an issue, I think.
Oh, it definitely is. Yeah. I mean, again, I think Gary makes another, not to expand on this, but we have a bunch of these private little roads in town that they sort of just live in limbo. Nobody really wants to own up to them. They don't really get cleaned up in the wintertime properly.
Right.
They have terrible potholes. And I, to me, that's something that was, again, this is a loophole that should have been closed years ago, you know, but it, they, for some reason it just.
And those are fine, but when you put in 152 units.
Right.
Back there with the responsibility of the homeowners to maintain to the center line, I, I think that needs to be addressed.
What, what I don't understand, Mr. Chairman, and, and we talked about this earlier, so not to completely be repetitive, but I need to understand how if all of these individual pieces are owned by individual homeowners and they need to not just traverse it, but use it and modify it, how are they allowed to even do that?
That's what I was, yeah, I brought.
And that's the piece that I need to be educated.
There, there's litigation on the road that I actually live on, um, regarding a covert issue and stuff like that. And they were going to go after the owner because of the covert getting clogged. And they couldn't go after him because the property, even though it was in front of his property, it's on the road. There is no deed for that actual parcel attached to that house. Not, not say, I don't know the whole legals of it. I just,
No, I understand.
I'm just spitting out the little parts of it that I know that just show how complicated it is, is to figure out how, how these things, and also any maintenance on the road for public safety, if not done by the abutter, can be done by the town and assess to the, the, uh, homeowner. Um, and they're through their taxes or whatever means, because they are, if, as having that parcel are required, you know, to maintain the road unless other, uh, things have been, uh, worked out with the town for public safety access. So that, that's a little bit I know about it.
So that's something we can certainly address at a future hearing, I would think too. Yes, ma'am?
Can I just clarify? So they're going to improve the road? Or that's the plan, I guess. And in the future, the homeowners are going to be required to maintain it?
No, the question is because.
So like potholes, et cetera.
Right. No, I don't think what's, we're going with that because once, I think that if the private road is then developed, it no longer is, would still suffice as a private road.
No, it would. It would stay private.
It stays private.
This, this road is not being turned over to the town. In my, is, I have no indication that it's ever being turned over to the town. They intend to keep this road private. So.
But as one of the owners, they have a right to maintain the road too. So.
But they have to pretty much if there's going to be 150 units, all these cars driving up and down the road. It's going to be the homeowners that live on that road that are required to maintain it with all this extra traffic. Is that correct?
For the record, I think that would be the requirement, right? So unless we could work.
So that's a huge issue.
Yeah.
They are one of the homeowners though, so they also would be. I think that Mr. Largess also has a comment.
Yep, that's okay. We're still discussing right now though. No, that's okay.
Yeah, that's private rules. That's why.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's why we just, we need a little more clarification, I think. Because I think we all have that same concern.
You have to go up to the lectern, please, sir.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Chair. So years ago, the, the town discussed about taking the road over and town meeting voted it down. They wanted nothing to do with Perry Place because of the flooding and the residents. We really didn't want the town to take it over. Um, to be honest with you, we were happy the way it was and we, we maintain it. Again, like you just said, we, we'd fill in the potholes. Uh, myself and Mr. Daikery, the town comes down, they run the plow down it, they do a path down the middle. Myself and Mr. Daikery plow it back right to the edges. Um, without pushing it into the wetlands, obviously, but we, we push it to the, the edges. So I don't know if that clarifies anything as far as the road being taken over, but the town wanted nothing to do with it because we didn't want anything to do with it. So I don't know if I can answer any of the. Yeah. And, and, and again, that was one of the other reasons because there is a private sawman on it. So the town didn't want to take a road over with a private sawman. So both myself and Mr. Daikery, I mean, I've been doing it since my father passed away in 98. My father did it. He was one of the original houses residents down there along with, uh, Mr. Downer's grandparents. So we're, we're both third generation, go back to the early 1900s. We've been maintaining the road, whether it was putting gravel in. So it, it's, it's been that way and hopefully it stays that way.
Okay. Um, so I think that we've, we've, I think we've run this course with this evening. I don't think there's anything else. We're, we're not gaining any new information here. So I'm going to ask that we continue this hearing again until the following meeting. Um, that will be the, I just want to make sure.
I think it's 19, 12, 19.
Yeah, I just like to make sure I go through. So correct, 12, 19 will be our next hearing on this matter. I think if people could be prepared, discuss specifically, uh, traffic concerns, so you all know what's going on for the next one. And then if we get past that to water management, then we'll certainly keep it open and we'll, we'll move forward from there. So thank you all very much for your time, but we need to move on to our other items for the season.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue as stated until the.
Hold second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So this meeting remains open for hearing and public comment at the town hall until the December meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Whoops. Okay. So we have my, my agenda brought up now. Okay. So everybody is cleared out for that particular hearing. Um, Perry Place has been continued. We have other business. So we have some decisions we'll go through first. We have 35 Coolidge Street, 25 Vinyl Street, 253 Prospect Street, 47 Rockland Road and Zero Cemetery Road. Um, do I have a motion to accept the decisions as written and submitted?
Chairman, motion to accept the decisions as written and submitted.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. The minutes, uh, excuse me, the decisions are accepted into the record. We have them.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, we have not signed.
No, we're going to do that.
Have them?
Yes.
The signature?
So, um, the minutes from 7/1/24, 8/15/24, 9/19/24 and 10/17/24. I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as submitted with the dates that you read because you have my agenda.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none. Okay. So we have one unusual request this evening and I'm going to make a, hopefully say this correctly. So we have a, uh, request to postpone signing one particular decision. And it's for Rockland Road. Um, so as you recall, this was the recycling plant came before us last meeting. They had discussed, um, the issues and the board made a decision. In the meantime, because of the timing, there has been other work in that building and the applicants and the abutters have had other discussions. And to the best of my ability to explain this is they were just requesting very simply a 30-day stay of execution, if you will, from signing that particular decision because they, there may be more information coming for that. We may be presented with the possibility of a request for appeal, but I do not know that for sure yet.
Request for appeal by what party, from what party?
All parties. Abutters and, um, applicant, from what I understand. Is the attorney for this particular, are you still here, sir, with us and okay and awake? So I have actually, um, Attorney Broder is here. He hung out and waited for this and I think he can do a better job of explaining what it is before I, I move it to the board.
Different, not better.
I can try. Um, so, you know, at, at your last meeting, the board denied the special permit request that was in front of the board. And, um, I think it's, it's clear from, you know, what our client's doing and intending to do with the property that they would be, you know, needing to utilize this property long-term. And the decision doesn't allow them to do that. So we're left with only a little bit of recourse at this point, which would be to appeal the decision. Um, I'm, I'm actually not privy to any, if there were conversations specifically with the abutters, it didn't come through me, but I do believe that, um, I do believe that tho- those conversations may have occurred, but with not, I wasn't present, so I just can't speak to those. But I think that the whole point is to see if there's a different path versus an appeal. If there is an ability to have a conversation, to come up with acceptable conditions, potentially that then we could propose to the board as conditions of a revised decision, which would be an approval with conditions. So it's, it's to give an opportunity to do that, to have those discussions.
Is there any abutters here on this particular one that would like to speak again then? Could you gentlemen want to come up and introduce yourself and tell us what you're, you're thinking here? And, and by the way, thank you very much for being patient through all this. I appreciate it. We know that our agendas sometimes can get lengthy and interesting.
Tim Daly, 25 Rockland Road. Um, I speak, I guess, on behalf of the residents. Um, the project is still going on and I know I can't talk about that tonight because it's not on the agenda. But we have agreed to discuss the property and what's being done, um, with the owner and the town of Auburn and Gary. And we hope to get a meeting, sit down with us, talk about our, our likes, our dislikes, his wants, our wants, and see if we can come up with something that is good for all of us. If we can't do that, then I would hope that it would come back and come back and you would sign it and your, your decision would stay. And then he could do whatever he wanted to do. But we've been willing to take the 30 days and see if we can change something. I don't know. I mean, we're with an open mind, but if we can't change anything, then we'd like you to go back to your original decision. So that's where we are right now. We've, we have agreed to sit down with the town, to sit down with the owner, sit down with the owners and just see if there's something that will help everybody. And if there is, great. And if there isn't, then we're right back where we were. So that's what we agreed to. Okay?
So I think.
And you spoke with most of the, uh, most of the neighborhood or, or just?
Um, I, I would say that I went around and asked the neighbors. Um, and I went streets over and I discussed, you know, different things. Um, we feel that we're acting in good faith as far as the decision. Um, whether it pans out for us, we don't know. But right now, it's not good for the neighborhood. That's all we know. So if we can help the neighborhood, then great. And if we can't, then your decision is wonderful for us. And we'll, we'll abide by that. Um, but we don't want to go more than 30 days. We can't. So we, we're hoping to sit down with everybody before your next meeting. And we're hoping to answer you with yea or nay and see what we come up with. If we come up with nothing, then we're okay. It's back to you.
Mr. Chairman, where does that leave the board on having to record that decision? What do we have for time left?
That's a great question.
There, there really isn't any particular time the decision's been made. So we're not, usually the time limit is to make a decision once the hearing is closed, not so much to sign the actual decision. Um, and if this board decides to, you know, delay signing what was decided, um, that, that's in your purview. And, um, we'd schedule a new public hearing for the next meeting if, if you decide to go that route. So all the abutters would be notified that the, of their consideration of all the parties is going to be basically reconsidered.
Attorney Broder, is there a limit on your appeal period though?
21 days.
So there is, but the appeal period doesn't start until the decision's clocked in with the town clerk.
Okay.
What I suggested in my very brief letter though, was in, in writing, so you'd have it, was we would be perfectly willing to allow the board to extend the decision deadline. So, and in mass general, I have a certain time from the close of the hearing to issue the decision. But we can agree to extend that so that you wouldn't be in a, we, we couldn't have you in a gotcha position where we, you said, oh, we didn't file the decision in time, therefore we get constructive approval. The written, uh, letter allows you to extend that out. I suggested until January, just in case. I know, I think we should notify the abutters if the board decides to reopen the hearing. So I don't know that we have time from a mailing perspective and whatnot. So I just suggested your January meeting as, as an outside date to resolve it and have the decision.
Uh, the deadline for the mailing is next week. So I'd have to know tonight what the plan is and I can mail out the, um, do the post public hearing and mail out the, the abutters notice next week.
For the December meeting?
The December meeting.
So you could post for the meeting and if, if, I guess, if nothing came of it, it would just be to keep, just keep the decision in place. But if something came out of the meetings that could be presented to you for your consideration, it's obviously still your decision.
Mr. Daly, do you think the neighbors are okay with pushing it to January? I mean, doesn't, oh.
No, absolutely not. Um, we've been doing this since April. Um, I think it's time that we grow up and we realize, I, I believe that the owner of the, of the property has no idea the noise of the trucks. Yes, maybe there's going to be 40 trucks. Yeah, it's 40 trucks. That's what everyone says. And if they come late, they come late. If they come early, they come early. Okay. But it's the noise. Okay. Like I said the last time, I can lay in my bed at seven o'clock in the morning, I sleep in the back of the house and I know that a truck is either going to come down the road or it's going to go up the road. And I, we can hear it in the house. So I, I do not, I mean, I speak for the neighbors, I hope, and I do not agree that we go, we drag this out any further. I think 30 days is more than enough to get, sit down, see if we can be somewhat happy. If we can, great. If we can't, it's back to you at the next meeting. But I know I would, I think I speak for the neighbors. I would not agree that we hold this out to January. And the reason, the main reason I wouldn't is because the trucks are still going to come up and down the road. Nothing's going to change in the neighborhood. All right. And more and more people are paying attention to what, what the trucks are now. So really, as far as the variance, the annoyance is the trucks right now. And so I think I speak for the neighbors. No, we would not be agreed to go past January. I'd like to see, you meet in November, right? I mean, this, December?
We do.
I'm sorry. I would like to see us speak and get this taken care of by, by your December meeting, either way. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, Ms. Chairman, I'm fine with, with, um, tabling this signature and, and, um, and taking it on in December. Is the intent that the December meeting, if in fact that would reopen for a public hearing, would we have the opportunity to amend the decision if we decided to do so?
So I think we would make sure procedures.
I mean, we're on record to take a vote.
Thank you.
Our vote's on record.
Right.
Take, take a vote, uh, get rid of the last vote. The vote changes.
So we would, so, so it is possible for us to vacate the previous vote?
Correct.
And then move forward based on new information. I mean, given, given their collaboration, I, I, I would be compelled to give them the time and, and put it on the, the, the agenda in December. We, there's no downside to that.
And I agree with you 100%. And I also think it's pretty important as government representatives here, where we are, um, is I, I very rarely see government reversing course on anything.
Please, please, citizen representative.
Citizen representative.
I do not.
However.
Do not.
Never see the government.
Wear a government hat.
And I think that's where you have the flexibility to do that.
Just a citizen.
Citizen representative of government. Okay.
But, uh, no, but, but in, in all honesty, I mean, I'm, I'm, um, I, I would say I'm, I'm, I'm elated that, that, that they are talking.
Yes.
Because it was, um, it was, and I, I led some of that discussion, but, um, or it was certainly a part of that discussion, but, um, it's a challenge. a part of that discussion, but it's a challenge. That business is really disrupting those neighbors. However, that business went into that property, you know, without any knowledge that they would have any opposition to do what they're doing.
Right.
You know, so I think for both parties, that there are challenges.
All right, so can I entertain a motion, I think, at this point? So can, I think that was probably the proper way to do it. So we have two options here. So for 47 Rockland Road, we can sign the decisions tonight, which we discussed, or we cannot sign the decision and vote to hold a new public hearing to reconsider the special permit application. And again, so I'm just reading what was here, it says, I move to board delays in signing preparation, decision for 47 Rockland Road, and schedule a new public hearing for December 19 ZBA meeting to consider the applicant's request for a new special permit.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to...
There you go, thank you. Get the cheaters.
I moved that the board delays signing in preparation for the prepared decision for 47 Rockland Road, and schedule a new public hearing for December 19th, ZBA meeting to be considered for applicants requesting for a special permit.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just want to make sure on this one, you have it. So I have Vice Chair Maron voted to approve. Mr. Cussi?
I'll approve.
Ms. Roach?
I'll approve.
Deny.
Deny?
Deny based on the fact that the motion included the wording, "a new public hearing." That's the motion you just put forth, Mr. Maron.
And that is, in fact, Mr. Chacolo in the text.
I deny on that basis.
And I'll vote to approve.
If you, if you do pass that motion, that takes the decision that they could, could fall back on, they've lost that. In other words, if you're having a new public hearing, that's what you're having. But they have won the position that they came here for. If you have a new public hearing, they have lost. If you, to put it at a win and lose situation, they have lost the standing that they currently have.
So are you suggesting procedurally we should just not, we should reopen that hearing and just not?
Well, the hearing's been closed, Mr. Chairman.
Right, we can't.
I believe we can reopen. It does, does in fact, it doesn't, it does in fact need to be a new public hearing.
And they do. They have certain standing that they have fought for and won. They lose that if you, if we, if we decide we're going to have a new public hearing. That's like we're considering what they've, what we went, what they came here for and did, null and void.
Hearing to consider whether the, an agreement has been reached between the two parties.
Right. Well, I think that's why we have to be careful as well.
That's what we're hoping to strike and going on, starting as soon as Monday, is to strike a deal between the two parties and come in with something written to the board that they've agreed that these are the terms of how this would work. And if you can't come with that, then that would just be off the table, and it would be a signing of that order, as far as, as far as my understanding with the discussion that we had.
If what they, if, if what they are stating, they come in and, oh, everybody's lovey-dovey, we have a nice, we've got a nice agreement, fine. But if it, if not, they would like to fall back on what they have achieved already. Other than that, they have no standing whatsoever now. It's like they never came.
But, Ms. Chacolo, I concede, I absolutely understand your point. But if, in fact, they were to come back at a new public hearing, and they were to express to us that an agreement had not been met, then at our discretion, we would have the opportunity to essentially sign the, sign the, sign...
The existing...
Existing, the existing decision.
I believe we wouldn't, because we've already, by that motion, we were already scheduling a new public hearing.
Well, does the new, I guess, then it begs the question for me to confirm, does the new public hearing vacate that vote completely?
No, I don't believe it.
I think you, I think you would have to vote to vacate.
Yeah, you would have to vote to vacate, correct. We would have to make, we would have to do a determinate act, I would think.
And if there's no deal, you would just agree not to vacate.
We know that for a fact. I mean, I don't...
Yeah, I would definitely say that.
Check that out, that's how it was interpreted, at least, my understanding was...
So if there's no deal, we're guaranteed that we can take those papers and sign them.
Just sign them, that's it. Yeah. If they come forth with a happy deal, then we can renegotiate.
Because we would lose, there'd be no problem with us recording this decision. We can wait 30 days to sign that and have it recorded.
Correct.
So we can, we can let this new issue remain in limbo for 30 days, rather than take the chance that what I'm saying might be true.
Well, I understand that, but we have the applicants here who are asking us to not delay it any further and make a decision at December meeting.
I don't know if that's what they said, but that's okay.
But, 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 we came in with a deal at the December meeting, even if it was postponed for 30 days, I think that could be amended at that time, could it not? Or would have to go to reopen the hearing at the next one and then vacate it?
Yeah, I think this is, honestly, I think this is getting over complicated. I don't think it's that difficult. I think that we just, we have to agree that we're going to, all we're doing this evening is agreeing that as a board, that we are not going to sign this piece of paper tonight. The town is then going to act and schedule a new hearing. So at the next meeting, we can decide to, either we're going to hear the new hearing like we did recently with that open foundation in the ground, or, you know, did we, did we hear that hearing? No, we did not. We decided it was not an adequate amount of change to the application. So we can take that same tact or path with this one, and say we could either sign the decision that we have existing this evening, or we can revisit that public hearing.
Would, Ms. Chairman, if I may?
Make that word "public."
Would it, would it satisfy, and, would it satisfy if I would amend my motion to move that the board delay signing the prepared decision for 47 Rockland Road for 30 days?
That's fine.
Ms. Chairman, I would...
You can do a separate motion to...
I would move, because I do understand on principle...
I understand.
I do understand on principle what Mr. Chacolo was driving at. So, so I would, I would then rescind and amend my motion to state I move that the board delays signing the prepared decision for 47 Rockland Road for 30 days.
Okay, Ms. Bush, before we move on that, it seemed like you had some comment that you wanted to put in there.
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay, so...
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. I know everyone wants to go home, but my problem is this, if everybody talks, by the way, if you guys can get Perry Place together too after and work on a deal, they'd be much appreciated. But if they get together and they work on an agreement, which would be great, and the neighbors agree, and the applicant agrees, don't we still have to give the other butters who don't participate in the negotiations the chance to come back when they were against it from the beginning and we said no, and now we're going to say yes?
Well, that's where they get, they would get re-notified, not a public hearing.
The chair would still need to have a public hearing.
Right, okay.
To accept any new information.
Right, so if they come in December and say, he has a new plan, everybody's agreed, we all love each other, we still have to have a meeting in January to vacate our original decision?
You could do all the same night as December.
And if that is the case, this gentleman has to be sure that they're all agreed that the previous decision is null and void.
It isn't, though. That's what we're saying.
That's what, that's why I said, they have a standing now, okay, where they have won their case. So to have another public hearing, okay, which I agree with Megan, that, that gives the opportunity for the rest of the people to have another say in.
Okay. They're really working with the rest of the people on this. This is, this is almost every other neighborhood. These are just the, sort of the spokesmen for the people in the neighborhood, and I've talked with a lot of them there, and we've all agreed, and so has the Zbo Arbor that, you know, tried to get together and iron this out between themselves with the deal, and if they can't, then this is just going to stand as it is. But we thought if we could just take a stay for 30 days to allow, you know, them, lawyers, not anybody else, just get together in a room and see if they can come up with terms, and then that would be put into writing exactly what the terms are, and then that could be presented to the board at the next meeting for reconsideration.
And I believe Attorney Broder said that it wouldn't be like a, ha ha, we got you in the corner.
No, 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 right, exactly. This is going to stand unless, they come to the table and appease the butters.
Understand my position.
I do, because I'm not a lawyer.
I think so. I think we all agree.
I mean, I always think it's the right thing, we just try to figure out how to do it.
But I, right, I think we all agree that it's a very positive thing, that these two parties that both have, have something to lose going forward with this, are willing to get back to the table. It's my own private advice that when they first start talking, with great respect for all of the attorneys in the room, do it without the attorneys for the first hour.
That, no, no, it will be for most of the time. And the neighbors have made sure that that was the condition.
But, and forgive me, anecdotes aside, we would all agree that them being able to collaborate together is just an awesome idea, right? How do we do that logistically? And this gentleman has something else to say.
Again, 25 Rockland Road, we're not doing this to, your point is great, we're not doing this to change the decision of your board. That's not the reason, that's not why we're doing it. We've been approached and wondering if we're up to talking about the issues. And we have agreed in good faith to, yes, talk about the issues. But in your point, if we're going to lose what we have worked so hard for since April, then just vote on it tonight, and we'll see you later.
Yeah, no, yeah.
But that's not, right, Gary's right, that's not on the table.
That was my point, that you wouldn't lose that.
Right, thank you.
It's not on the table, and as I, as I interpret this, from what I, what I do understand, is that it's not, it's not, we're not vacating that vote this evening. We're delaying a signature for a vote that's on record.
And in all, in all, I did, Attorney Broder, we don't want him in the meeting either, and it's not, nothing against him personally, okay? I don't want to say that, but we would like to have the opportunity to sit down with the neighbors, the town, and the owner.
Admirable.
And just sit down and have a discussion in the town hall, and talk what the issues are, and see if we could come up with a plan.
If the world could work that way.
That's...
Honestly.
I'm sure you guys know this already, but I'll say it just for the record as the butter, as if you don't come to an agreement, and they appeal, and they win...
They win.
You get no say.
Well, we don't get...
You get no wiggle room on time, on that, they, they get a yes, and they do whatever they want.
So if you sign tonight, we get no say anyways, correct? So what is there to lose?
No, I think it's a great, I'm just, I'm saying it to you in terms of, like, keep your mind super open, you know, we'd love people to collaborate, and you may be able to get them to agree to some terms on hours and some things that if they appeal and win, you will not have that option. So I, I think it's a great thing, I...
And in fairness to the town, we don't want to be here till 11:30. So the only three people we've invited is us three. Okay, so those would be the only people that'll be at the meeting.
Can I also like to add, too, that I think at the end of the last meeting, I had mentioned that we have potentially are in an actionable position with the fact that this piece of property has a variance attached to it. So we are also providing the opportunity to avoid expensive litigation should we have the possibility of revisiting the situation.
You're right, Mr. Chairman, and I think it's...
So speaking earlier of taxes and concern about money out of pocket, this is a perfect example of a lot of behind-the-scenes work going on for the town, the residents, and the owner to avoid bringing this in front of a judge.
No, you're right, Mr. Chairman, and I think you make a really good point, Ms. Roach. I mean, I think that's a solid risk, right, for this applicant?
Yeah, of course.
Being denied to appeal, and to sue for appeal. But even though there's a variance, and I won't relitigate the vote, but there's a considerable safety clause, for lack of a better phrase, at this time of year.
Sure.
There's this considerable safety clause within that variance that specifically outlines, and in my view, aligns with the concerns that were raised with us, which is one of the reasons why our vote went the way it went. I know I said I wouldn't relitigate it, and I'm doing that, but, but I think it's a solid risk.
I just, I guess, want to ask Attorney Broder, do you have a comment on, of all of us in the room, you're absolutely the most well-versed on the zoning. If, in your opinion, if we say it like it was originally brought forward in a public meeting, do you think it's better for us to just say we vote to extend 30 days on the vote and leave it at that?
What I, what concerns me about that is what happens at the, at the next meeting. So you've, you've agreed to postpone not fully writing the decision or signing the decision, but it doesn't really allow, if we come to an agreement, if we come back to you and say, we have this agreement here, the conditions that we've talked about, et cetera, I'm not sure how you act on those at that point.
Because you wouldn't be on the agenda.
Because if we're not, if we're not a, I understand Mr. Chacolo's point, and I think it's a good one, I don't think we want a new hearing. I think what we want is to reopen the hearing for reconsideration of the deliberation, and I think you can do that. I'm not 100% sure, I don't have my Mass. General Law in front of me, but I think we've done this at least once before, where, and I think Town Council gave the opinion at the time, and this is going back a little bit, so forgive me, but I think what he said was, so long as the decision isn't signed and done and final, you can take whatever action you want. So I think you could say, look, we're going to vote to postpone the decision for 30 days, and vote to offer a possible reconsideration at the next meeting. And then it's noticed and posted, et cetera, it's on the agenda. It's not a new hearing to alleviate that concern, but it leaves the possibility of additional testimony to be heard. And it might be very simple, we didn't make a deal. Or it might be, we made a deal, and we're standing like this, saying, we made a deal, and this is what it says, do you guys agree that's what it says? Yep. And then, of course, it's still up to you, right? This is still your decision, so even if we come to some sort of agreement, it's just a, we agreed to this, would you, would you endorse that as a decision? And you still have the ability to make your own independent decision. But I think not having an ability to have discussion would be the only thing that bothers me about not, about just doing a straight postponement for 30 days.
Won't be a new meeting.
I don't think it would be a new meeting.
It'd just be reopening the original.
Yes.
What I would suggest, honestly, is, I think we're getting, I think we're getting off topic again with this particular thing. I think we're kind of getting mired down in the procedures, where we have 30 days to actually work that out, once they go ahead and, if we allow this to take place, and if they notify the butters, we have 30 days to figure out how to handle it at the next meeting. That means the town attorney can weigh in, procedurally, we can look it up, we have time to figure that out.
And I like the fact that the butters will all be re-notified.
I don't think we have to figure out and sit here tonight and discuss the actual finite details of how to proceed at the next meeting. I think we can do that between now and then.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Coyle, may I have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Ms. Coyle, how are you this evening?
Good evening, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk. I think for the suggestion, for what you're considering, if you do delay to sign the decision for 47 Rockland Road, the only thing that it's occurring to me, and just because, you know, administratively, we handle a lot of things within the department, may I suggest maybe not using the 30-day mark? When I counted it out, yes, it does get us within the next scheduled time, so December 19th, I think, is like 28 days, if I counted right. But, I mean, if we have delays, whether we have some, something that causes us to cancel... we have some, something that causes us to cancel, if it could be, you know, as part of your decision, the next scheduled ZBA meeting would cover that, like, have a little flexibility there, because obviously this is, you know, something that you would consider. I think Attorney Broda suggested January, I understand, you know, Mr. Daley and Mr. Chandler's concern, because they don't want to delay a decision, but I'm just thinking, like, logistically, if we do end up in court on this, we just want it to be a little cleaner so that it gives all the parties a chance to, to talk this out, so just a suggestion.
And that's fine with us, I think that's...
I think we've heard from all parties concerned here, I don't think, again, I don't think we're going to get any more new knowledge here.
So, Ms. Chairman, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, let's see what you got.
I'm ready to amend my amended, what was it again? Motion, excuse me, I'm ready to amend my amended motion. So I, I move, Mr. Chairman, that the board delays signing the prepared decision for 47 Rockland Road and offer a possible reconsideration at the next scheduled ZBA meeting, scheduled, planned for December 19th, 2024.
Does that work on the town side? Does that verbiage work on the town side?
I, I think at the next scheduled ZBA meeting would be great.
Okay, does that work on the attorney's side of the house, the judicial branch?
Absolutely, and I just, I point out that my letter to you gives you the additional flexibility if there were some, you know, pandemic or something, I've extended the decision deadline such that there can't be the gotcha moment, so that's until January, something, I forget what I said in the letter, but that's all I was getting at with the January before, sorry, I didn't mean to throw everybody off the scent, I understand there's a planned meeting very soon, so that's going to happen, and this meeting should happen, I just put the January in there so you had a little buffer, so it's along the same veins.
Does that work for the community end of things? Okay, so just for the record, the community end of things said yes. So we have the board in agreement, we have the community in agreement, the legislative branch and the government branch, all unhappy, playing nice now, so...
Given that we have taken this, this road to get to this point, to satisfy the last comment, I'm going to do this one more time, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, go right ahead, let's get it.
Because, because I, I do appreciate the, the level of expertise that's beyond me in this room. So, Ms. Chairman, I amend my previous two motions to land on a final consideration. So, Ms. Chairman, I make the motion to, I move that the board delays signing the prepared decision for 47 Rockland Road and offer a possible reconsideration at the next scheduled ZBA meeting.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, just to make sure. Vice Chair Marin?
I approve.
Mr. Cusi?
Approve.
Ms. Roach?
Approve.
Mr. Chacolo?
Approve.
And I vote to approve, and our two well-seasoned alternates, don't vote on this one, particular one, but we'll have you participate in the meeting though. All right, so that's all set, we will get that squared away at some point, make sure all those procedurally checkmarks are taken care of, and we will see you at the next meeting. That was not a hearing, by the way, so we're not opening and closing any of that. Yep, we've got some signatures, so now we're going to sign the signatures of the decisions for the correct one, that's why we waited for those. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. Larry, that was a good call. What's that? That was a good call.
Yeah, it's good that we all catch those little, those little things there, you know? One second, I'm signing right now. Okay, so, um, we have a discussion, we're taking the modification, we're taking care of the minutes, we have no new business unseen by the chair, I believe, fortunately, so I'm happy with that, and we're just waiting for the rest of your signatures, and when those are completed, back to the doctor over here, we can, on our way.
I'm sorry.
I'm a mess. So that's good. Oh, you son of a gun, you knew it, you knew. And again, you know, while we're doing this too, I just got to say thank you very much, all of you, again, like, to weed through all of these things and try to make everybody happy and try to get through all of these, it's really challenging, so I really appreciate all of your...
I gotta sign that?
And sorting through all these problems. And to the town side too, thank you very much for doing all that in the background, like I said, people don't realize...
It's because I haven't got my glasses, I'm signing it crappy.
Things like, if you go to the legal aspect of things, then this can save the town a substantial amount of money.
I know that, and that's why I went to bat to try to get everybody together, I was working on both sides. Monday we were going to be in this room or that room with our small group, crew from our...
And Kate, and you're signed that?
Three, I want to try and hammer out a deal, because as Meghan said previously, both sides can lose here.
Right, absolutely.
And I mentioned, they may get nothing for a condition, and our, we're going to get stuck with a huge legal bill.
Okay, Larry's done, sunny evening.
This is, if both sides have a benefit in negotiating this right now, and get it, because something's going in that building, it's in it, and, 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 so let's, let's just get it right.
Yep, exactly.
And it's hard, I feel bad, because we, the sprinkler issue that started this whole thing, which really complicated the truck traffic, complicated a lot of things there, and the fact we couldn't get the baler working until Tuesday after the decision, and my guy went there that day to check, and, and John didn't think it was the building, and they opened up the door, and then the baler was running, it's how quiet it is, as you even said, they do not make a lot of, a lot of noise.
Okay, yeah, it's just the truck traffic.
Exactly, and that's why I didn't, maybe that road is going to need to be for, for fire department life safety, I believe, is going to have to go up to 18 feet for the roadway going down, and I think that they're going to be looking to want to get it paved, which, if nothing else, it's going to quiet the truck traffic down a tremendous amount.
And the dust.
These are, these are the things we're trying to get hammered out over, over the next, next week or two here, and hopefully come up with some much better resolve, because that's, this is a dicey one.
Excellent, no, that's, again, it's behind the scenes stuff that people don't realize, and before I close, one thing I wanted to talk about, December 5th, I believe it is, and I'm sure nobody else is watching this at home and I'm the only person just listening to this, but there is a traffic safety concern meeting at the town hall here in this room to discuss overall traffic conditions in town. We all have concerns, we're all getting inundated with traffic, most of our major projects come before this board now with a concern for traffic. So December 5th, show up in this room and discuss your concerns, you have your opportunity, I just want to make sure we, people know that.
Great.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody's opposed? Okay, we'll see you next month.